Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me okay?
This meeting is being recorded.
We can hear you.
Did you see a thumbs up? Can you hear me okay? We don't have any audio here.
Yeah, we can hear you. So thumbs up.
Welcome, everybody. Now, this has been, this has been a long year for all of us in Watcom County and throughout the whole world. And my family and I have done a lot of talking over the last year. And we, we really wanted to give a message tonight. And one that's hopefully of hope, and it's the story of this year. My son Randy here is playing piano and singing some backups. And my daughter wrote it, the lyrics. So this is a tune called Been A Long Year. We started down an open road, casting hopes upon the sun. The light that guides us side by side, on solid ground we stood strong. Where rivers were wide and victories were won. Been a long year as we waited for more, never ceasing a moment for a breath. Where rivers were wide and victories were won. And the storm came and took the sun. Then the storm came and took the sun. Crashing our hopes with waves of darkness. The pain draws out and the sorrow it grows. Battle we face and the open cries. Been a long year as we waited for more, never ceasing a moment for a breath. Where rivers were wide and victories were won. Then the storm came and took the sun. We sat apart, thinking of blue skies. Piecing together a way to make for better days. Looking back to another time, a simple word to believe. We looked beyond a broken dream, another day started, a way to find our way back. We start to see a path to take, to awaken and believe again, to see our way through. Be safe, everybody. And I'd like to call to order the Watcom County Council for December 8th, 2020. It is about 7:06 or 7:00 PM, and we are meeting virtually. Could you please call the roll? And I'm just going to say here, because I can't hear any audio until I go back to my office.
Brad Brown?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Here.
Ben Ellenboss?
Present.
Kathy, when you're done, if you could put up the flag for the, for the pledge of allegiance, that would be great.
Will do. Got Todd Donovan, Ben Ellenboss?
Present.
Carol Frazee?
Here.
Kathy Kirschner?
Here.
And now for the flags.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, the clerk of the council is going to read a statement regarding boards and commissions. And following that, county executive of Sat Paul Sodoo will give his executive report. And I'm going to go back to my office so I can see you in just about five minutes.
Barry was asking that, what happened first before the executive report?
Dana was going to read the announcement.
Okay.
It looks like Dana's mic may not be working. If, let's just give her a second to figure that out, maybe restart her mic.
Yeah, another thing, I can't figure out why I'm showing in two places. I'm at home and I don't know, has somebody else signed under my name? Or I'm just perplexed.
They'll find out soon.
I think I did sign off my computer when I left.
I just have to say while we're waiting, I just found out this afternoon that my camera has a microphone in it. So for those last nine months that I've been using my phone, I could have been using my computer camera. I feel like such a dork, anyway.
Kathy, if you want to, talking about computer cameras, I was on a meeting and two and a half hours after I left the meeting, the camera still showed as being on. And the meeting was shut down.
Clearly, we've mastered the technology, though.
Somebody turned off the other second name of mine.
Hey, I'll go ahead and read the statement.
You guys hear me yet?
No, we got you, Dana. Go for it.
Okay, awesome. Thank you so much. Thanks for the opportunity. I just want to give a little bit of a plug for our boards and commissions that we're, we're recruiting for heavily, actually, in December and January. So the council is accepting applications from county residents to fill vacancies on several citizen advisory boards, commissions, and committees that span a wide range of important local issues. Advisory committees work on a variety of topics such as agriculture, natural resources, land use planning, parks, economic development, and social services. For more information, please visit the Boards and Commissions vacancy webpage on the county website or call the county council office or the county executive's office. Applications can be submitted online or by mail and are due by 10:00 AM, January 5th, 2021. And so I just wanted to get that on the record, that we are recruiting. And we'd love for citizens of Watcom County to join us as the council makes important decisions and the county executive. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Sat Paul, I believe that Dana is going to ask you to do your report next.
I can start. Well, good evening, Watcom County residents and council members. When I started as Watcom County Executive in January 2020, I laid out three principles for my administration. First one, we have more in common than what divides us. Second, compromise does not mean we have to agree on everything. Compromise is about, we can live with the solutions proposed. And the third one is, I love Watcom. And you have seen that logo, we, our team has come up with that. So I, I will continue my tenure on the same principles in the coming years. Well, I have to say, what a year. What a year 2020 has been. No one had any idea of this pandemic. And we knew so little in March than what we know today. And still, we are learning something new every day about this virus. This tumultuous year 2020 brought forward completely unknown issues requiring quick thinking and decision making. To learn by the day and decide by the day. We had an emergency plan for earthquakes, floods, or Mount Baker blowing up, but not much mention of a pandemic. Today, we all feel a little more confident as we all have come to understand few things about the pandemic and keep learning. Health-wise, Watcom County has done well. We had a plan, and our plan worked. We kept the case numbers low, which kept deaths to the minimum. Every single unneeded death is too much. Right now, we are seeing a huge surge, which is concerning. This pandemic needs all residents to do the right thing. Just health department or testing is not sufficient. Fiscally, the county government has done fairly. We maintain this level of service with many sacrifices by the county employees who stood up a unified command, coordinated with all seven cities. Employees work from home, juggle their personal lives, and perform their professional duties quite well. The CARES Act funding helped us to cope with extraordinary expenses and activities to keep our community safe. We will know more about our county's financial health in early New Year. I'm hopeful for additional, I'm hopeful for additional state and federal help in 2021. Just today, Governor Inslee announced another $50 million, and the date is extended to January 4th. But these are CARES Act dollars. We are awaiting more details in next few days. We have achieved a unique success of working together. When county pooled the CARES Act funding with all seven cities, the credit goes to all city mayors for their cooperation and commitment to make things happen. We have given a lion's share of our CARES Act funding to help small businesses, our schools, food security and food banks, and childcare organizations. The council deserves a huge thanks to make timely decisions to allow all this to happen. I would like to express my deep gratitude for approving the next biennial budget and allowing new priorities for water issues, child and family, and racial equity mission. I would like to assure you that my team and I are committed to put our best efforts to make a real difference on these issues in our community. We, as administrators and policymakers, are going to face several looming uncertainties in 2021. Like COVID-19 surge and its impacts, small business survival, schools and higher education impacts, vaccine distribution, acute housing, acute housing shortage, to mention few, including the economic, overall economic uncertainty and county budget. In the coming months and years, I expect an approaching behavioral health crisis as pandemic continues to devastate our social and economic fabric of our communities and our nation. The economic uncertainty of our local community, especially small business well-being, is worrisome. I sincerely hope the vaccine and therapeutics help us exercise more control on the pandemic and we get back to some normalcy. I want to thank all the county residents for following the COVID-19 protocols. Wash your hands, watch your distance, and wear a mask. Please, please, continue to follow these rules because these are as good as vaccine. I once again express my sincere thanks to all the council members for your understanding and allowing the administration team to take various steps to keep moving forward. I'm always open to suggestions and viable ideas to do my job better. Please feel free to reach out to me or my team members so we can keep you well informed and keep engaged in our collective responsibility to our constituents. I wish you all the best holiday season and the happy, healthy, and prosperous New Year. Thank you.
Thank you, Executive Sodoo. Okay, moving on to our next item, we have five sets of minutes to approve. Do I have a motion to approve?
I have a motion to approve.
Donovan, move. Brown seconds. Any discussion, corrections, additions, or deletions to those minutes? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Ben Ellenboss? Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Brad Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Those minutes are approved unanimously. We'll now move into the open session. The open session is being held virtually today. Members of the public wishing to speak can access more information on how to join by going to www.watcomcounty.us/joinvirtualcouncil. At this time, would everyone please mute, mute their cameras? Okay, is there anyone from the public that wishes to speak?
Yes, we have two attendees with their hands raised, Jerry DeBruin and Marvin Wayne. Go ahead, Jerry. You have three minutes. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Jerry DeBruin, Sumas, 3797 Clearbrook Road in Sumas. I'm the district chief for Fire District 14 out here in the east part of the county. I'm also the president of the Watcom County Chiefs Association. And this, what I'm going to talk about is in reference to the purchase of the, well, it's called the ALS 360 program, the Striker gurney purchase, and along with many of the other items like the Lucas and the 12, the LifePak 15s, and the whole package deal. Mostly talking about because the, what pertains to the BLS systems in the county and in working together with the ALS units is the gurneys. And just wanted to say that the Chiefs Association already has supported this. And just to make everybody, make sure that everybody's aware of that. This has been a process that's been in play, you know, for, you know, probably almost a year already or more through the EMS Trauma Care Council, the beginnings of the talk there, Education Committee, which I'm also chair of, and then through the Watcom County Chiefs Association. And, and from there, it's been recommended up to the TAB, which also recommended it up to the EOB, and it was approved at all those levels to go for approval. I think the biggest thing is, you know, is just interoperability. I think initially, you know, well, initially, it was planned to just do this for the ALS units in the county, the, those units, which led to, would lead to, in, you know, lack of operability and, and some challenges for moving patients from the old gurneys, the furnos, and moving them over to when we had to meet up and, you know, transfer a patient. This, you know, would lead to cohesion throughout the county where all the units, BLS, ALS, would all be used in the same Striker gurneys, which also is a huge safety factor as far as being able to maintain safety in the rigs when they're being transported, you know, via the ambulance to the hospital or to meet up with the medics. These units are, well, the Striker gurneys and the attachments or how they're mounted in the rigs would all be crash rated. And just overall for weight, the ferno gurneys that we currently are using, I, were rated for like around 400 pounds max. And the new gurneys are rated up to like 700 pounds. Just overall, a good move for us, not cheap, like all medical equipment, but at the same time, it is something that we feel is necessary and has full support throughout the system. So thank you for your time, council members, and appreciate all that you do and wishing you a blessed holiday season.
Next speaker is Marvin Wayne. Go ahead, Marvin.
So just to quickly introduce myself, because I haven't had a chance to meet all of you, but many of you for many years. I'm the medical program director for Watcom County. Have served in this role for 40-some years. I don't think I want to date myself. But I have a unique opportunity, and I wanted to take it while we are talking about this purchase as an example. It's an example of how Mike Hilli, Steve Cohen, our new education person, Jeremy Morton, our data person, myself, are striving to make a difference and make a difference through what Watcom County is a unified and operational entity is, Watcom County EMS. We want to provide the best care and caring for both our patients and our caregivers. Today, we talk a lot about caregivers. Sometimes we forget that we have to take care of them. And the point is that this type of equipment will make their lives safer, back in other injuries, and will make our patients' lives safer because we're going to be able to carry patients of greater weight. Unfortunately, that's the reality of today. Lastly, I'm going to make this as a pitch for how we are effectively using loving money. Loving money is something we consider our responsibility. And when we use it, we use it for the welfare of everyone. For those that are in the, in the top level of homes and those that live under the bridge. So thank you. And I'd invite all of you sometime to meet you one day when it's safe in person. And the best of the holiday season to you all.
Next speaker is Scott Rickman. Go ahead, Scott.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, please.
My name's Scott Rickman, 2733 Genjar Ave in Ferndale. I'm also the Medical Services Officer, Division Chief of EMS for the Bellingham Fire Department. I'm also here to speak favorably of the ALS 360 agreement. This was a project that initially started in cooperation with Fire District 7 and Bellingham Fire Department has, and has grown over the year into what we believe is a very large cost savings over the 10-year period and investment in our responders in the community. To have cutting-edge medical equipment that provides the highest safety and operability and interoperability in the system is just another way for us to move forward as an EMS system and serve the public and our community in the best possible way we can. There's been a lot of effort behind this, this proposal, a lot of work behind the scenes vetting this. It's a newer concept and something that I know a lot of people have had a hard time getting their heads around. We spend a lot of time educating people just to a new concept and a new way of doing business. What I hope this proves and shows going forward is the cooperative effort of all EMS agencies and fire agencies within Watcom County and our commitment to protecting the public and our responders, especially in the middle of this pandemic at the highest level possible. And shows that moving forward, we're willing to work together to come up with innovative and creative solutions to problems that we share as a system. And this is just that first step in us really solidifying the future for, for a county EMS. So thank you for your time.
Next speaker is Marcus D. Please state your full name for the record. And if anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand virtually. Go ahead, Marcus.
Hi, Marcus D. Stidham. I am the homeless advocate on the Homeless Strategies Work Group. I thank you for your appointment to that position. I want to just try to keep it very clear that we really need the shelters, guys. We really need, I think we need 150 right now. Sorry, I think that's where we're at. If we had 150, then we might even have a little bit of a buffer left. But if we need to clear that lawn and we need to try to get these people services, our best chance is to have enough shelters here. Also, we have, I've been wrestling back and forth. I'm speaking to the health board when I speak to you guys. So I've talked a lot with the health department about their wishes and wants for this site. And we've been unable to meet their expectations and wants. We really need, we really need more support from services and not more expectation from services at this point. So there is some desire to get, I'm glad that the Byron Street is being made more available to us this time. But they keep, we keep getting to a point where we're expected to try to hold somebody overnight in a tent who may be compromised as a policy. And I think that that's a really bad idea, that we could put anybody in the camp in danger or our volunteers trying to deal with that. So as soon as we can identify somebody who should maybe go to Byron Street, they need to get cleared out and do that. And I'm hoping for the very best aid that we can get to make that happen. If there's, if there's, if it looks like we're going to overrun Byron Street anytime in the near future, which it doesn't really look like we're in danger yet or anything there, I'm going to suggest that you hurry up and buy at least a handful of these tiny shelters, put them at Winter Haven, put a fence around it, have the health department run it, have our volunteers help them. But to expect our volunteers to run that whole show while also trying to maintain the mayhem on the sidewalk and on the street right there on the lawn, please understand. It's a very loosely knit group of, yes, there's an organization who has a plan that is coming out of this group. But the whole group there is a very loose-knit group of campers who are representing themselves on the street. And we're just trying to help them. And so we need all services to please come to bear. If you have tents, if you have money for tents, if you have money for sleeping bags, whatever, bring it. Bring us tents and sleeping bags, bring us the things that we need to help. Bring us tents and sleeping bags, bring us the things that we need to help your clients on the lawn. We have your clients, Wakem County, please bring your services, please bring their social workers, please bring the drugs that they need to get their heads right so that they don't fall into other drugs. So, many of them are cleaning up right there on the lawn, and they need assistance in the next step. We're asking for services. So, again, let's get some tiny homes into Winter Haven. If you want to do any sort of social distancing or isolation or whatever you want to do, figure out the protocols of doing that with tiny homes now so we can get ahead of the curve, put them in Winter Haven, put a fence around it, have your people run it, and we'll try to help. I appreciate all that you all are doing, and let's hurry this up, okay? 150, please. Sorry, guys, let's just do it.
Next speaker is Ida Cardona. Go ahead, Ida.
Hi, can y'all hear me okay?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Great. Hey, y'all, my name is Ida Cardona. I'm a senior at Western Washington University in Business Management, Entrepreneurship and Innovation, Arts Enterprise and Cultural Innovation, a resident of the York neighborhood, and a community organizer, a volunteer at Two Ten Camp, and in negotiations with the city, and pushing for the county to get more emergency sheltering up as well as more transitionary housing and long-term solutions to solve the housing crisis here in Wakem County. So, I have a list of demands just off the cuff. I'm echoing Marcus here. We need at least 150 pallet shelters just to get through this winter. We're already losing lives right now. We're already losing lives right now. And I understand that COVID has its own effect on this, but understand that folks are more likely to die from hypothermia right now than they are to die of COVID. We can focus on getting more shelter and getting more quarantine situations accessible, just like Marcus said. We could get the shelters back on Winter Haven and make that an easily accessible quarantine site for the folks that are at camp. And while I'm on that note, I just want to make sure that there's a clear distinction here that the individuals exercising their rights on the City Hall lawn right now is completely separate from the emergent organization of community organizers that are working actively to create an operation for an emergency shelter encampment. So, these are folks here that are ready to negotiate and show them, show y'all that we have the capacity to be able to operate an emergency shelter and be able to roll that over into transitionary housing situation. As far as the health department is concerned, I'm really appreciative that they have, you know, come through with outbreak testing at City Hall and have given us their recommendations. But we're needing to also find more capacity to assist citizens in implementing those recommendations because we are already in triage mode on the ground at the protest, and, you know, having the resources that y'all have, you know, like $24,000 to drop, you know, like a couple of different sites to be able to have a triage in crisis, mental health crisis stabilization space. I'm just wondering where our priorities are and how we're able to, like, figure out, you know, transportation from City Hall or any space to a facility that's ready to accept folks for quarantine situations. Further, we need sites to put these shelters on, and so, we've been working with the city planning department to be able to identify those sites. But I also urge the planning department of Wakem County to consider the public land that they already have in their pockets and to give them up to the folks who actually need them. Again, more transitional housing, more services, just root county funding to the city so we can take care of business. Thanks for your time.
The next speaker is HK, I believe it's Heather Cattodin. Go ahead, Heather. Go ahead, Heather.
Hi there.
Can you hear me? We can hear you, go ahead.
Thank you. Heather Cattodin, tax-paying citizen since 1989, retired as a gardener, healthcare clinician, and retired volunteer firefighter. Thank you, council, for your hard work, and to the county staff for doing your best. Mayor, community appreciate the efforts of our health department doing their best. I agree with citizen Marcus, free the need for many individual pallet shelters or tiny homes. We're also going to need, as a community, support with making and delivering meals for many unsheltered individuals. I agree with the concerns, rerodents in some types of shelters. I think it's important we have a few wheelchair-accessible units that include a back door and a few units that are metal huts in addition to the local wood huts. I've continued to volunteer assisting tent camping homeless residents at City Hall, Lottie Street, with their basic needs for safety and health, while I've continued to communicate with multiple staff to seek out accurate data in regards to how a homeless citizen can access shelter and healthcare. All our systems are broken, city, county, nonprofit agency, faith agency. In response to these broken systems, we are also coping with a huge fear response to the effects of a global virus. The citizens that have been volunteering continue to ask for more community support and to request our councils to create radical change to create safety and health and housing and access to nourishment. I appreciate the growing support from our community to continue to show up safely in person at City Hall and Public Library to provide water and meals to our homeless citizens who are sleeping on cardboard outside under covers of thin plastic or nylon tents, many who in the past have stayed either at drop-in center or base camp. I want our public record to reflect that I and two other citizens witnessed on Saturday, November 28th, a homeless sober, calm, 20-year-old male attempting to check back into base camp, being told he could not come inside due to his name being on a list of people who were seen on an internet videos being at City Hall while in the presence of homeless citizens. Each night is unique as to whether our only public shelter is available. Please request health department to take a lead in providing online updates as there continues to be public outdated information in our community, miscorrectly stating that our homeless community who is still unsheltered, saying incorrectly that they can get inside the base camp, but most nights that I've witnessed, this is not correct. And I understand the reasoning given to protect the residents inside of base camp, and I certainly honor the good work of staff at base camp. Thank you again, council and staff, and mayor, community work together and create solutions to get through this winter together. Thank you.
Next speaker is, followed by the caller with the number ending in 824, and then Melissa Wisner. Go ahead, Eve.
Hello, my name is Eve Smaeson Marcus. I am a board member of the Wakem Human Rights Task Force. I'm a music teacher in Bellingham and a community organizer. I echo what Marcus and Heather and Ida have said here tonight. We need help, we need shelters, we need resources. Last night, with the wind and rain, multiple tents were blown over at City Hall, our clothing tent was blown over. Every day, there's a new barrier. We have folks who are on the ground and willing to, and willing to work together, and the campers have been amazing, and, but we need help. And expecting folks to follow COVID guidelines when, you know, they're on, in the midst of crises is seemingly impossible. Providing pallet shelters, we need more pallet shelters, 150 pallet shelters, we need more space, county has lots of land, we need CARES dollars. We know that we haven't used all of them up, so can we use those for social workers, for pallet shelters, for space, for resources? It's getting, gonna be getting cold. We haven't seen, we've had a few frozen nights, but as the winter keeps going, it's gonna get colder. It's hard to sleep, it's hard to eat, it's hard to function when it's too cold to think, you know? It's like, we don't, we need to be more aware of what people are going through. We are all sitting inside our warm houses with heat and electricity and running water, and these folks don't have that, and that makes life so much more difficult, not to mention if you've been disconnected from your, from your social worker, from your medication. These are our friends and our neighbors, and we need to take care of them, and they take care of us. We have to work together to solve this problem, and I, and I ask for the county to give us more money, more space, more staff, more support.
The next speaker is the caller with the phone number starting in 360 and ending in 824. Go ahead and please state your full name for the record, please.
Yes, this is Louise Cassidy, Point Roberts, speaking towards AB 2020-546. It's imperative that this be put on hold to allow the community time to go through this issue and work out details. Two weeks is not enough time for the community to come together, as they only meet once a month, and calling emergency meetings to try and deal with stuff, again, goes against the grain of even this ordinance in allowing people time to digest what's going on and figure out what they would like this to be. The Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee never really had any teeth before, and with the garbage ordinance, it was shown that it does. So, the community still isn't quite aware of how this advisory committee works or what it's good for and how it can help. And so, I ask that even though the community is talking, it doesn't mean that it's an open public meeting where we can come together and come up with a solution. It is better if the PRCAC and the county executive can work together at a meeting, an open public meeting with the community to come up with solutions for the community based on the community's needs, not a directive from county council. It's also proving really difficult because now we have our two at-large members are not continuing, one is resigned and another is not renewing, and it doesn't make it look very good for anybody to want to join or participate in the PRCAC. So, this is doing more harm than good, and I would ask council if they would please put this on the back burner and let us figure out what's best for Point Roberts. Thank you.
The next speaker is Melissa Wisner. Go ahead, Melissa.
Hello, everyone. So, yeah, it's me again. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so tired. I am literally working and down at camp every day and taking care of my children as a single mother. I am completely wiped. I, I'm setting up counseling and mental health, check-in appointments with people just with me because we don't have anybody, and these people need mental health help, and they have asked me to counsel and talk therapy them because I am the closest thing to a therapist they have because I've been in 12-step programs my whole life as a child and been through therapy and things. I am now collaborating with my own personal therapist to take a crash course because no one will help us. I cried last night at city council like a big fat wuss, like, I'm so, like, I need a partnership, we need Clean Green, we need you guys to do the pallets, we need the city to do the Clean Green space. We can do that, it would give us the space that we need to be able to house these people properly and get them quarantined properly and to be able to take care of them properly so that we can get them off the lawn and out of your doorways and out from under your bridges and put them somewhere safe, dry, and easily monitored and accessible. It's not rocket surgery, I say this all the time. I know some of you guys have watched my videos, I'm pretty sure Tyler with the badonkadonk thing on it. He's been talking to you guys, listen to Tyler Bird, he knows what he's talking about a little bit. And I'll say that about Chud lightly, I got respect for that dude. Sat Paul, you really, really need to get off your butt and do something. This inaction is literally killing people. They're cold, they're wet, they're scared, they're dying out there, and I am overworked and not even paid. I don't even have a degree in this. I'm taking a crash course for my own therapist, like, embarrassing. Everyone's left us, and hon, shut the doors. Like, what do you want me to do? We, I'm gonna, they need to be indoors, I need to be able to monitor these people. They're sick, they need help, they need medical care, we need shelters. Please, guys, please do this for us. I'm cold and I'm wet and I'm so tired. Thank you, have a great night.
The next speaker with the hand raised is listed as PRIBC. If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand virtually by clicking on the icon. PRIBC, please state your name for the record.
Good evening, council. My name is Tom O'Brien, and I'm a director of the PRIBC, and I would like to follow suit with Louise Cassidy and encourage council to lend the PRCAC a sufficient amount of time, whether it be two weeks or 30 days, to at the very least go through its upcoming applicant's form so as to better advise the county executive's office on possible directions to head with his appointments. And I'd also like to reiterate something that I think the PRIBC's been very much out front on, and something that I think has very much been lacking with the PRCAC in its 10 years of existence, and that is that Point Roberts, as an unincorporated town, desperately needs an economic strategy. And economic strategies don't come easy. It's rather extensive work, and it's not only time-consuming but costly, and the PRCAC is simply not set up to do that work. But the right selection of representatives on the PRCAC can vet work from the community and make recommendations on a continuing basis, just so long as those members have that as their objective. More than anything, Point Roberts needs a vision and an economic strategy, and I think it would be a very good partnership at this stage for the county executive's office and council to give assurances to the PRCAC that it does not expect that advisory committee to originate and do as it did last year in taking up the entire year on doing proposals for revisions and amendments to one specific item. It's a much larger job than that, and there are folks in the community who are doing that work. So, I'd love to see council encourage, just as it wants better representation and more transparency. I think it would be very well-received if council encouraged the economic development process forthwith, and I think you might see lots of very good results in the near term. Thanks so much, and thank you, Mr. Buchanan, for the great music, that was actually a joy to see. Happy holidays.
The next speaker, and I apologize if I mispronounce this, is Marquand Pagsley. Go ahead, Marquand, please state your full name for the record.
Oh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, go ahead, please.
Basically, upon my knowledge here, I came into Bellingham around September. I'm from Seattle, I've witnessed what has happened from their previous doubts. So, right now, what I've been noticing is that Bellingham has become dependent on the citizens and what they have provided for them entirely. They become lazy and basically misusing and not working for what they have earned. We need people who have training and provide an emotional support more like an ear, like a mother figure. We need a parent role for these homeless communities because they've become dependent on outside sources. Medication's being restricted, people losing, like, sources, resources, and environmental, like, needs are not, it's not fair. I've noticed that from myself, I am a homeless. I've noticed that from myself, I am a homeless individual. I myself have lost my job and things overdue to Corona. No money means nothing, does nothing to me and towards us as a community. And if you don't have money, you can't get anything that would you, which means nothing to provide emotional support. I want to see or would like to request training as in like counselors, emotional advocates, and basically people who can provide a word for people who are too scared to ask for themselves. And it's just, we should, we should all try to help ourselves as a family and not try to steal from another person because we're too scared to lose something that we never had. It's, it's, it hurts, it hurts me to see from my, my own personal self of what I grew up, grew up to be in, to see something so, so easily, so easily fixed under the misconception of training and ill, ill-resourced, um, uh, ill-resourced help is basically what I should say. I don't know how to more explain this or more to simplify this. It's a, we should help us, no, the state should help us by giving the people to train us to perform psychological and emotional help to the people that can't speak for themselves and also provide also medical training towards people who misuse drugs to get the help they need and to get on the right prescriptions they should have. Because I myself was prescribed Gouda Lynn. My doctor is unavailable. So I, I have to turn from my own mental health to the street drug, methamphetamines. I know that. It's not helpful. I'm, I'm back on my prescription. I feel great. Now that I'm back on my feet, I want myself and I want my people to feel the same way I am because I had the help. Now we need to give the help, is what I'm saying.
If anyone else would like to speak, please raise your hand virtually by clicking on the hand icon. There are no other hands raised at this time.
Thank you, Kathy. We will close the public comment session and we will turn it over to Mr. Bird in finance.
Let me give a shot of the video, but if I start breaking up, let me know and I'll turn it off. So we're gonna start with the introduction items here and I'm gonna break this up.
Now you're breaking up, Tyler. Audio's breaking.
Groups based on what the votes were in committee.
Having trouble hearing here.
Yeah, we're, we're losing, yeah.
Committee three zero, the amended version was passed in committee three zero.
Tyler, we can't, we can't hear anything. We just, we heard your last sentence you said, but we didn't hear anything leading up to that.
Yeah. Okay. Barry, I'm gonna try to call on my phone real quick. Give me one second.
Okay, sure.
I might have said this in the morning, too. Maybe somebody else could do the meeting. We ended up starting 10 minutes late in the morning.
Yeah, true.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. Let's try this one more time. So items 12 and 13 on the consent agenda, AB 2020 dash 574 and AB 2020 dash 575. The amended version of both of these items was passed in committee three zero. The change to these items was a change in the term date. The, they were updated to reflect December 15th, 2020 through December 15th, 2021. I so moved for approval.
We have that motion, discussion. Councilmember Donovan?
I didn't hear the early part of this. I was gonna move that we get item 2020, 585 and 2025, 589 included in the consent agenda because there was no recommendation from the finance committee on those. And I didn't quite get what the initial motion was on this because Mr. Bird was breaking up. And the
Now?
The items I was talking about was the EMS gurneys and the paramedic issues that, that the recommendations on. So I would like to have those in the consent agenda.
So Todd, what I was trying to say earlier was I'm grouping these based on the votes and how they were voted on in committee. And I'll bring forward the old consent agenda in a couple of different groups. So I'm just starting with
Again, I just, I couldn't hear you earlier, so.
I actually, thank you.
Okay, so we have that motion. Councilmember Frazee?
I guess I'm just going back to when staff asked us to stay in order. I was wondering if this is going to mess everything up with our video. Staff asked a few meetings ago if we could just stay in order so the timestamp would be easier, so.
Good point. I remember that as well. Dana, you wanna weigh in?
Yes, that would be awesome. I was just gonna get on and say that, actually. So if you would just start with
Item one.
Yeah, item one and get at least the largest group, one through whatever, out of the way. At least we'll have some of our timestamps correct without having to go back through the entire meeting and redo them.
Okay. You want me to read these individually then, Dana?
That's not necessary. I think all you have to do is specify like items X through Z or whatever, whatever items that you're gonna propose.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Dana, for the record, do we need the item number as in 1, 2, 3 or the bill number, AB 2020?
You can do the item number. The best way to do it would be to move the consent agenda and then pull off the items that you want to take outside of the consent agenda, like the one that you have that failed in committee, one to one to one. And the ones that you didn't get to, which I believe there were some consent items that you did not get to. So move all the consent items that, that are coming through to council with the recommendation for approval first. Does that make sense? So items, you know, one, one through two and four through eight. Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, yeah. So we'll pull that last motion and start over. One more time. So we'll move item one, two, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. Scratch that. I apologize. Let me, that wasn't the consent. That was the other one. Okay, we'll start over again. So item 1, 2, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, all passing committee three zero and I so move.
Okay, discussion on that motion. Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I think, I think it'd be easier if it's the ones that are pulled out rather than listing those. So I have to go back to the approved motions from this afternoon. I think that's what Dana, our clerk was saying is the ones that are not in the consent agenda, take those out and the ones that are remaining are the motion that would be approved. Because I'm right now.
So that's what I'm doing. I'm listing off the ones that were approved in committee.
We don't, but the consent agenda, so we do, we approve the contention, consent agenda minus the ones that were not approved. I think it'd be cleaner. I'll go back to the
Mr. Donovan is correct as to why we traditionally do it.
Yes, that's correct. I think I misspoke. Sorry. So you would
It's okay. How about this?
I think you got it.
Maybe, but my phone dropped at the exact same time.
We're making the best out of this. We'll just keep going.
Councilmember Kirchner?
Maybe I can take a shot at making a motion to approve the consent agenda items except for items 12, 13, 21, 22, 23, and 24. That's what I heard Tyler leave out.
Okay, we have that motion. Discussion. Seeing none, please call roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Believe it or not, I'm gonna vote yes.
That passes seven to zero.
All right. Next item is AB 2020 dash 557, item number three. This failed in committee.
So that's back to council then with no recommendation?
No, I guess it would be recommended as a no since it's failed.
Right, right. Recommended as a no, that's correct. Anybody on council want to make a motion to?
I move approval.
Second.
Frazee seconds, Brown moves. Councilmember Kirchner?
Okay, now I'm really confused. I thought that we just approved all the items except for 12, 13, 21 to 24. Didn't we just approve three? Yeah, Tyler, you're, you're raising, yeah. So, so we just approved that one already, Councilmember Bird, because that one I didn't catch when you were reading your list of not approved items or vice versa.
Yeah. Awesome. Love internet where it works well in technology.
Sorry.
That's okay. So then can we have a motion to reconsider AB 2020 dash 557?
I would second that motion. Discussion on the motion to reconsider. Seeing none, please call a roll.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird? Tyler Bird? Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
I'll go back to Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Okay, the motion to reconsider passes unanimously. What further action on the consent agenda?
Well, so we'll go back to item number three, AB 2020 dash 557. That failed in committee. So the recommendation would be no.
Move approval?
Second.
Brown moves approval and Donovan seconds. Discussion. Councilmember Ellenboss?
I'm interested in what considerations changed Councilmember Brown's mind from voting no during the day and voting yes tonight or moving for approval tonight.
Well, my understanding is that we're, first off, the services have been provided. And if we don't continue to provide these and we can't continue to operate the congregant care center until six.
Other discussion? Seeing none, we shall take a vote on motion to approve.
Hey Barry, I'm sorry.
Yeah, go ahead, Tyler.
Thanks. Yeah. I'm here to vote no against this one. I was abstaining earlier, but this facility is still basically empty. And I'm just really struggling with the amount of money that we're spending on this facility right now, 4% with what was previously three individuals and now is in, I think as of last night was eight, but the night before was 12. So the additional security, the $156,000 that we're spending there are essentially $20,000 per month plus for the cleaning, which is gonna be another $20,000 to $30,000 per month that we're gonna be asked to budget or approve next. The, it's just, I can't do that with, with this thing not being used. So I'll vote no on this tonight and do the same with the next item when it comes up.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yep, just to gang for the record, the facility has limited use because it's an isolation and quarantine facility that we need. We hope we have a limited use for that side of it so we can ever get out of the phase three or two or whatever, however, excuse heck, rain. And the, I think the council has been expressing that we want the remaining units to be accessible and we're having issues with fire code or city regulations on that. And I hope we're, I think we're moving forward on that. But I guess I appreciate Mr. Bird's frustration on those things, but it's for the record to show that efforts are being made to use the space.
Councilmember Bird?
One of the things that I don't understand is that when you look at what's happening in front of City Hall right now, that the number of people there are growing and we're seeing more and more people up front. It's obviously not a safe situation with the propane tanks and a number of other issues. But you've also seen that a couple of people there have now gotten sick and have tested positive. To me, it seems like with the way the council has already come forward unanimously said we'd like to be able to use those remaining rooms at Byron Street. And looking at that situation for people who are sleeping out front on the lawn that we know have come into positive contact with at least two COVID cases. If it was any other person, we would tell them that they have to isolate and quarantine. And we would give them the opportunity to go to this hotel and use the room. But in this case, we're telling them that they should go across the street and camp out in front of the library instead. I don't understand why we would do that and not utilize the rooms that the council has already said we want to use, that we're already paying for, that we're approving additional spending for at this point in time and that are readily available and far superior to having people camp on the lawn in an unsafe environment. So I would like to see that, that we're figuring that out and actually moving that forward. And it's difficult for us not to, and I don't understand why.
Further discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
No.
That passes four to three.
Next item, we'll go back to items 12 and 13, AB 2020 dash 574 and AB 2020 dash 575. The amended version of these passed The amended version of these passed in committee three zero, and I move the amended versions for approval.
Okay, we have that motion for items 12 and 13, the amended version. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
The next five items, 21, 22, 23, 24, and there is a 25 that's not on the agenda from legislator. But it was added later, the supplemental item. Dana, do you have, or go ahead Todd?
Did you get, did you get number 13? I just want to make sure. And?
Yeah.
You did. Okay, thank you. And what was your question?
With the, the number of the added item, it's not on the original agenda.
Oh.
I thought 22 and 23 were approved because they were not removed from the motion.
I showed 23 being held in committee.
Okay.
At least on my script, I mean.
Ah, okay. Barry, you're right. 21, 22, 24.
That sounds right.
Supplemental item. So those three were, we voted unanimously not to make a decision in committee and to request more information be provided before tonight's council meeting, so they could be discussed via the whole council with the supplemental information voted on. Barry, I'll pass those four items to you. They'll be addressed individually.
So you're moving 20, 21, 22, and 24, right?
21, 22, 24, and the supplemental that Dana's pulling.
Not 20?
I have that, that added item by revision. Is that, is that the one you're talking about?
That's the perfect one.
Correct. That you didn't even get to in committee today.
Right, right. Chair, not 20. 20 was the Humane Society and that was voted unanimously.
Okay. Discussion on that motion. Councilmember Donovan?
What was the motion actually? I had a different motion, but the current motion is those are passed to the council as a whole. So my motion would be to approve item 21 and 24.
Can we each one of these individually?
Oh, this is Dana. That would be awesome if you could do them one at a time.
I move that we approve item 21, the EMS purchase of gurneys.
Second.
Okay, so moved to second for item number 21. Discussion. Councilmember Bird?
It's for you Todd. Yeah, so I'm going to abstain from this one, not because I agree with it or disagree with it, only because there's some still questions that I have. I know supplemental information was sent over, but I haven't been able to read it today without that. I don't fully comprehend everything in here, and so I don't feel comfortable voting on it.
Other discussion? Councilmember Brown?
Yeah, I'm a bit torn with this one because I support the project and certainly think it is something useful and essential for the community. It has been a bit of a struggle to evaluate this to the level that I think we're expected to, given the amount of money involved. So I could go either way in approving this because Mr. Hilli did send us some additional information, which does provide itemized pricing, although there's nothing that shows comparable pricing to ensure that we've got a competitive bid, and that's my, that's my big challenges. Not that I disagree with the equipment, it's just the issue of can we demonstrate to the community that we really have done a due diligence before we approve this size of an expenditure?
Mr. Ellenboss?
Am I Darth Vadering right now or am I good?
You're semi-Darth Vadering, but we can understand you.
Okay, let me turn my video off a minute. I'm going to speak in favor of this because I've used subpar gurneys at times in my experience on the refinery emergency response team, and I can understand the liability that might be there if we continue on with subpar gurneys. So while that amount of money seems like a lot of, over a 10-year period, it might be only one lawsuit. So I'm speaking in favor of it.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I appreciate the fiscal concerns on this, but you know, at some point, I'll defer to the process that the EMS folks went through to do this, and I think there's interoperability issues that are important with this vendor, and also planning for the fifth unit that's going to be coming online. So I do, I respect the discussion in the finance committee, but I think there's actually some time sensitivity to this as well. So I think I can move it forward.
Councilmember Brown?
I have a question for Councilmember Ellenboss. Have you seen the second subsequent document that itemizes the prices and in your opinion are these normal and customary?
Um, yeah, the stuff is expensive. That's what I'm going to say.
Because it's coming in at $74,000 a unit, I think, if I remember correctly.
That doesn't surprise me. Do I think it's okay? Do I think it's right? No, it makes me sick, but I do know that this type of equipment is outrageously priced because it has to perform every time, and people's lives depend on it performing every time.
Okay. As you're an independent voice on this issue, if you, if you think that the prices are reasonable, then I am satisfied.
I didn't say they're reasonable. I just don't think we have another option.
Well, sorry, normal, normal, reasonable, maybe not the right word, but normal.
Any other discussion? It's got the Ellenboss stamp of approval, so. Okay, let's vote.
Tyler Bird?
Abstained.
Tyler Bird?
Abstained, sorry.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes. That passes six to, six to zero with one extension. Somebody hit play.
So there's still item 24, I think.
We have 22, 24, and the supplemental, so Barry, AB number 22, AB 2020-586, that was held in committee, voted to move forward to committee. So I'll move approval for that item tonight for discussion.
Okay, we have item 22 moved for approval. Discussion.
I will need a second since it didn't get approval in committee.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a second. Discussion on the motion? Councilmember Bird?
This is the second item related to Byron Street that I referred to earlier, so I'll vote no again tonight on this item for the same reason as before.
Any other discussion? Councilmember Brown?
Yeah. The challenge, the challenge I have, Mr. Bird, with voting no is, is you're asking for the community to step up on doing something with the 210 and the encampment down at City Hall. It's not going to work if we don't put the proper procedures and personnel in place. And this will be the second time you're voting against the procedures and the personnel necessary to support these type of operations. And I'm just struggling with that, trying to understand the logic, because the county cannot assume responsibility for homeless encampments unless the county government, the county council, gives the staff the tools and the resources to do it properly. Otherwise, they put their lives at risk, they put the citizens in the camps at risk, and we open ourselves up tremendous liability due to lack of supervision or proper procedures. So I don't, I can't support opposing this, and I don't understand your reasons respectfully.
Councilmember Bird?
Councilmember Brown, I appreciate that. Thank you for articulating the reasons why. I'll try to address those a little bit better, but ultimately, I think it boils down to, we're now nine months into this, moving into 10 months that we've been using this facility, and the majority of that time that we've had these 60 rooms, we've used them on average for three people on any given night. And so more recently, we've seen that increase, but as of last night, or the last report I read, which I believe was last night, I believe it was eight people that were in that unit or in that facility. So we're paying essentially $90,000 to $100,000 per month, and that does not include the capital costs that we invested into this facility in the beginning for repairs, including painting and new appliances and other products. And so that's an enormous expense not fully utilized this specific facility. Now, this facility, we're saying is supposed to be used for isolation and quarantine. The organizations that we have contracted with to manage isolation and quarantine is primarily Lighthouse Mission, which is our primary homeless agency in town. So it's an agency that knows how to deal with these individuals. The second agency, which is there to support them, is C Mar from a medical standpoint. You have the organization, you have the people and agencies who understand this demographic and support them as a primary job day in and day out, already there on site. And when we look at that, we are putting people in there on occasion from these homeless facilities or who are homeless. And yet, when we say that people who have come in contact need to isolate, quarantine, we turn around and say, but if we know that you've come in contact and you're right now camping out on the lawn, you're an exception to that, and instead of putting you in isolation and quarantine, we're going to allow you to stay there and to continue to mingle and to come in contact with other individuals. That not only increases the spread that we're going to deal with, which is a compounding issue, is the higher the spread is today, the higher it's going to be in two or three days unless we come under control, right? So it compounds that issue, but it also continues to not utilize the resources and the facilities that we're paying for every single month. I understand in the first two or three months, hey, that's fine, we didn't utilize those, we didn't have a plan. Nine to 10 months in, that's enough time for me to look at it and say, we have an opportunity or had plenty of opportunity to identify an alternative solution and come up with other ways to go about this. So it is more cost effective. We're moving into that period where we're now having to front that bill. I don't want to front that bill and not utilize the place while we continue to see spread of people living on the streets. And it's worse than that, right? Propane tanks blowing up? How much worse can we see this situation get before we actually start utilizing the resources we have to address it well? Does that answer your question?
Councilmember Brown?
I think Mr. Donovan was first, so I'll speak.
Well, he's, he's, let's get this little conversation out of the way.
Mr. Bird?
Mr. Bird, it feels like you're saying that because we, the council or the county has not fully utilized the facility, the punishment for that is to withdraw security and withdraw the cleaning services until such time as we, someone commits to filling the thing up. Reality is, with security, if you want 24/7 security and you've got a facility that is designed to handle 30 people and you only have one person there, you still need five full-time employees to provide 24/7 coverage. It's just the way the math works. So, you know, and we can't, we can't sort of selectively say, well, we only need five rooms tonight, so let's go and get five rooms at the Chrisless because, you know, they'll give us a deal this time, or let's get five rooms at the Hampton Inn, because those organizations do not want to do this. They don't want to be known as the COVID hotel, and I don't blame them. I wouldn't if I was running it either.
Councilmember Donovan?
This is really, I don't know how to say this. So we spent a lot of time listening to Mr. Bird giving that speech repeatedly, and I don't know, should we fact check it and spend time doing that again and again? So he said Lighthouse Mission was an isolation and quarantine facility. It's not. Then, I don't, we can't spend time just going over this and over this and over this. We have the Byron Street facility for better for worse because that is our isolation and quarantine facility. And I don't know like how much time we spend having these speeches to no end. It's really frustrating. I think this is actually on the chair of the council to get us beyond just doing this over and over and over. I'm sorry, Barry, but it's a problem.
Okay, so, Mr. Bird, can you keep it short?
Yeah, maybe. Todd, I'm sorry, I totally disagree. We're going to have this conversation over and over and over every single time an item comes up for approval. If we didn't continuously bring forward additional spending requests, we wouldn't be continuously talking about this. And it's not right for the chair to cut us off or cut me off and allow me to have a conversation and speak to it, or tell why I'm voting no or what my feelings are and why. You yourself said in the last meeting that we were here that you didn't like the fact that I supposedly voted no on things or abstained without leaving reasoning, and now you're asking that I be cut off and not be allowed to give reasoning. That doesn't make sense. So I understand that you might disagree with my standpoint. That's one thing. You have by all rights the opportunity and the right to do so, but you don't have the right to say that we don't have the ability to discuss an issue, especially one like this that I very much disagree with. That's actually wrong. This issue, if it keeps coming up and we ask one more spending, I will continue to say the same thing, unless it's full and we're utilizing it. But as long as we spend $1,000 a night on this facility, $1,000 per person per night, and you can fact check that. Todd, would you do me a favor and actually go write down all of the costs that we spent on this facility and the number of nights used and bring those facts back to us? You can show us those at the next meeting. I'd love for you to have that breakdown so that you can show the community how wrong that I am with my knowledge and my numbers and my math on this. It'd be fantastic. I don't believe that number is wrong at all based on the research that I've done. So either we're spending $1,000 a night on a facility for people to stay in, and we're spending it so that they can stay there and we keep them with security, we give them incentives through freebies and credits that they can use in the store, we clean up the place after them, we bring them free food, and a number of other things. When the average person, you, me, Kathy, Barry, we would tell to go home and do quarantine without any of that. Or if you're homeless right now and you're in the front of the City Hall, we're going to tell you to stay there and keep spreading it amongst other people. Tell me where I'm wrong there. Which one of those facts is wrong or not a fact? And then I'll quit arguing it. But as far as I'm aware, every single one of those is right, and you had a dozen people on tonight testifying the same thing.
Councilor Donovan?
Yeah, just really quick, um, we have a council member who's basically filibustering. We've addressed the issue of the per night thing repeatedly. I respect Mr. Bird stating his reasons for opposing things, but he does dominate the conversation and.
Councilmember Kirchner, didn't you have your hand up about an hour ago?
Yes, thank you, Chair. I just wanted to say that in committee today, I expressed my concern about the cost of this contract. And then we did receive some information from Ann from the um, the vendor that's providing this service. And it looks like the employees are paid more than I thought, and they also are receiving benefits. And he does go on to explain the cost that his um, organization is incurring to do this work. And then I also do recall Ann saying that we're only paying for the work when it's done. So it isn't like we're paying when when rooms aren't being cleaned. So I'm going to go ahead and support this tonight. And I just wanted to let you know why I was supporting it.
Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, I, uh, Councilmember Bird, I think we all agree that we're not happy with the expense, but we know we need to keep people safe and we need a place to keep them safe. And I believe that to stay in the phase that we're in, we need that space available when people need to be quarantined. So I I will be voting for this, but like, unless there's a better way and a better facility for a cheaper price, it hasn't come forward, and this is the way we're moving right now. Um, I think we need to continue to support this.
Councilor Brown?
Um, I just want to make Maggie, I I'm going to really make Mr. Bird's night. We are going to spend money on this, and we are going to spend more money on this sort of stuff in the future. And the amount of money per person is going to go up, and I'll tell you why. It's because the people we rely on at places like the Mission or St. Joe's or the Health Department to, if we ask them to do anything out of their normal job, such as provide a degree of security or cleaning or food support or whatever, we are just increasing the ability to burn them out. In fact, we are going to have to take more weight off their shoulders, find ways to do things that they're already doing just to protect them so they can stick around through this whole pandemic and not just get burned out in the next couple of months. So there is going to be more of these bills, and I will support them because I want to support the people who are trying to service these populations.
Councilor Bird?
I respect that. And I'm not voting no against this stuff just for the purpose of voting no, because I do want to find a better way. Could I ask this? Can we go back out to RFP and see if there is another option? I understand that in the first two months, that hotel owners in in the entire country was super afraid, and no one wanted a COVID hotel. But I think you can look across the entire country, our state and our county recently, and see business owners that are doing everything they can to not shut down, and they're not afraid of that anymore, and they're just trying to keep their businesses open and keep going. And so if we could go back out to RFP and contact the different hotels, the different apartments, the builders, and see, is it the only option? Is this it? If it is, fine, I'll accept that. But I'm having a hard time otherwise. Would that be a fair compromise? Would the council support that?
Let's let our votes on this motion do our speaking. Councilmember Kirchner?
I was just going to say, I would, I would support that plan, Tyler. I think we got this facility rented through, I believe, March with an extension or somewhere in that timeline. And if we can um, go back to a more traditional process for how we procure things, since we're not in a we're in an emergency, but not at the same level that we were in April, um, to look for alternatives going forward after this contract expires, I'd be supportive of that for sure. If we still need, if we still need this service, and let's hope and pray we don't.
Yes. Okay, so let's go ahead and get this motion voted on.
Uh, Donovan?
Yes, I'm remembering the motion from before.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
That pass was five to two.
The next item is eighty-two zero two zero dash five eight seven. This item was held in committee till January, when more information can be provided. The next item after that is AB two zero two zero dash five eight nine. This item was forwarded tonight without a vote to the committee or the council as a whole to address. I will move for approval for discussion.
Councilor Donovan?
One at a time, who would move for the five eight seven that that has held till January? Doing these one at a time.
Um, now I'm confused.
Well, I think Dana asked us to do these one at a time, and that was bringing up item twenty-three and twenty-four at the same time, so I was just doing it one at a time, so am I missing messing this up here? The the um, holding item twenty-three, which is the telephone thing.
Yes, that was, that would be a recommend, the recommendation from committee would be to hold in committee. So that needs to be voted on by the full council.
I move that we, by by the committee recommendation, I'll hold that second.
Um, Councilmember Bird, could you please withdraw your previous motion so we don't have a motion on top of a motion?
Sure, I'll draw.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Mr. Donovan's motion is on the table, discussion? Mr. Bird?
I'll let Councilmember, Councilmember Kirchner go first.
Go ahead, Miss Kirchner.
I just have a question. Um, are the, is Finance Committee the only one that falls under that rule where if an item is held in committee, it still comes to the full council to be voted to be held in committee? Because it seems like other items in other committees don't have that same rule. So I'm wondering if Finance has a special status or there's a reason why we do that.
This is Dana. Um, if there's an item that a committee is working on, like an ordinance that they they're working on and working on and working on and working on until it's ready to be introduced at council, that it still belongs to the committee as they're working on it, so the committee can vote to hold it. But these items are scheduled on the council agenda for the evening, so the committee is making a recommendation to hold it in committee.
Okay, so if it's not kind of the council's item and it's on the evening agenda, we're going to vote on it? Yes, and take, okay, thank you.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, discussion? Councilmember Bird?
Todd, two weeks ago, we talked about raising taxes and and working on things to find savings. This is one of the things that I was referring to. This is held in finance unanimously, that we could have more information, so that we could see if there was a better opportunity for us to have better services and save money. There isn't a priority to this, and instead of allowing us to work on that, you're asking for it to be approved tonight. That's
No, 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 no.
Am I wrong?
Yeah, no, I was approving the committee's motion to hold this, right? Okay, sorry.
And then I take that whole thing back, and I apologize.
And I'm really glad.
I'm going to call Comcast and upgrade my internet.
There's so many moving parts with the Finance Committee, I would never want to be chair of it, so.
Okay, yeah, I'm sorry for that. I recognize that or recognize when I'm wrong for sure, Phil.
No worries.
Todd, please forgive me.
So the motion on the table is item twenty-three. Uh, the motion, Mr. Donovan's motion, is to uphold the committee decision to hold in committee. Is that correct? Okay. Discussion on that motion.
Thank you for for that. Thank you.
It's a lot easier with natural resources. We just have like one or two items.
Councilmember Brown?
Uh, just quickly, there are two parts to that. One was the cost options, whether there was different alternative. And the other was um, to get a discussion going as to whether we could eliminate the need for doing security codes before making calls, because it's just a waste of time. I don't think any of us care who uses the phone to make a long-distance call in North America at the moment, so.
Other discussion? Okay, let's call it all.
Ben Ellenboss?
Just to be clear, yes vote means that it'll stay in committee?
Correct.
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes, but I should vote no to really confuse things, but yes.
Um, that passes unanimously.
All right. Uh, the next item is AB two zero two zero dash five eight nine, item twenty-four. This was forwarded tonight, three zero without a vote, to be discussed by the committee as a whole. I'll move for approval for discussion.
Do we have a second?
Need a second.
I'll second.
Councilmember Kirchner seconds, discussion? Councilmember Bird?
So the only reason this was forwarded was because we didn't have a chance to get to this item and the next item. We weren't waiting on additional information. We just ran out of time, so there's, there's really no decision here either way. And there might be still questions from council members that need to be addressed or staff reports.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
Is there anybody to give us a report on this? Because that's a, that's a large increase.
Yeah, Mr. Hilly's here.
Yeah, good evening, Council. Mike Hilly, EMS manager, is related to the community paramedic position based out of the Bellingham Fire Department. Uh, I was informed earlier this year that because of the COVID and the uh, budget, uh, you know, restrictions, cutbacks with the city, that they would be, uh, wouldn't be able to fund that position any longer. Uh, we feel that that position is extremely important to the continued success of the teams. And so we would like to take that funding on under the levy. Now, we feel it's appropriate to position this under the levy. Uh, we have two other community paramedics, uh, one in Bellingham and one in Ferndale uh, that are being reimbursed from the levy for this as well. So we'd like to bring all of that under the levy, uh, that would give the fire department a little bit of breathing room on their budget and allow us to continue expansion of these other conversations under the greatest program and community paramedics in regards to co-responder units. And so we feel that fits in well.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So for this year, it's going to be seven hundred and four thousand, and then next year or the year after, when we've sufficiently dealt with COVID, it'll go back down to three eighty-three? Or what's the reason for the increase in cost? Or is it just that we're taking the money from, from a different place than we've taken it from before, and the cost really hasn't increased?
That's correct, Councilmember Ellenboss. The same amounts are there. Uh, we're just taking on the funding from a full, of a full-time position at the Bellingham Fire Department under the existing levy. Um, and that increase is just uh, an increase of the current contract that we have with Bellingham for that F T E position over there. So we're just taking that one position and paying for that under the levy, uh, with, in addition to the two that we already have there.
Uh, Bird and then Donovan?
So, Mike, I think I heard Councilmember Ellenboss differently. He was asking if it's going from three hundred and eighty-three thousand previously to seven hundred thousand now, and whether it would go back down to three hundred and eighty-three thousand after COVID. But the way I read this document is that the three eighty-three to the seven oh four, that difference is actually a two-year budget for twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one. And it it's the wages and expenses for each of those years. So one hundred ninety-two thousand in twenty twenty-one and one hundred ninety-seven thousand in twenty twenty-two. The combined two years is the three eighty-three with or thereabouts, which is equal to the previous three hundred and change for the previous two-year period. Is that right?
Yes, you are correct, Councilmember Bird. Thank you for, yeah, you are correct, Councilmember Bird. That's exactly what's going on, and the contract extends uh, to the end of the levy, uh, basically. So when we put the new levy together, we'll represent those new uh, budgets in in that. So six, the uh, six-year levy is also a six-year budget. So uh, that will continue through the end of twenty-two, twenty-three is when the next levy starts out. We're working on it now.
Okay, thank you. As it relates to this item, in the past, I've asked about using those funds for other issues. And every time I've asked, I've been told that we cannot do that. But this fund was very specifically passed and well detailed in a way that it represented exactly what it could be spent on, and we could not add anything else outside of that. So each time I brought that forward, I've been told no, and it hasn't happened. How is this item different? And why can we inject this item into that when the other things we can't?
Uh, thank you, Councilmember Bird. Yes, uh, so the, that reference you're talking about is relation to the R C W uh, through the state on what EMS levies are, uh, have reimbursable allowances under, under that rule. Uh, so it's pretty specific to EMS-type activities. However, that does include community paramedic or actually what we like to term mobile integrated health. Uh, and it also uh, have the ability to use some of those funds for co-responder teams, for example, that are addressing issues in the nine-one-one system. And it also allows reimbursement for outreach and prevention activities that represent EMS issues, uh, but is restricted to EMS activities and projects.
Donovan, Brown, and then Ellenboss?
I don't doubt that this is um, something that the EMS levy funds can, can use. But looking at the interlocal, there's no expiry date on that. So um, I I, and I don't necessarily oppose this, but are we, this is falling upon, on Mr. Bird and Ellenboss's question, are we, are we transferring um, some paramedic positions that were funded through another source to be funded through the EMS levy? And if it is, it's a six-year levy that's expiring, the interlocal doesn't say that, just as when it starts, as it says, doesn't say when it ends. So are we, are we committing to funding these positions going forward through a different funding source than we were before? That makes sense.
Well, the two uh, community paramedics, uh, Councilmember Donovan, are are funded out of the levy presently. Uh, the uh, position that we're talking about is actually a captain position, Captain Joe Frank. And the fire department has been partnering with this program, you know, since the levy started. And so out of Bellingham, who innovated and got this program going in the first place, started on their own funds of back, and I believe it was twenty fourteen or fifteen, and developed that internally. So when the levy came around, of course, we wanted to push those programs out of the county and saw the value of the community medics. So uh, back in twenty eighteen, you may remember that we came to council and asked for funding uh, for a second community paramedic in Bellingham from the levy. And then in addition to that, we asked for funding for uh, the community paramedic in Ferndale Fire District Seven, both communities of health. And so that money comes in the levy and redistributed that back out uh, for those two F T Es. So uh, when the city approached me about, of course, their budget, it seemed uh, very appropriate to be able to take on that F T position, do an amendment on their particular, on their current I L A, on their current interlocal agreement, and that expires at the end of twenty-two. So uh, right now in levy planning, uh, for, uh, we will write new contracts that would start in twenty twenty-three. And of course, those budgets would be demonstrated and including in that new levy plan and that new levy budget.
Okay, it's good to get that out there, but I, that does seem consistent with with the levy that was approved.
Councilman Brown?
Uh, I think, I think this is for two people, is that right? Mr. Hilly?
Uh, no, this is, this is for one position for two years, and I don't have Uh, no, this is, this is for one position for two years, and, uh, I don't have the exact numbers, but I think I recall a hundred and ninety-two thousand for twenty-one and maybe a hundred ninety-seven thousand for twenty-two. And that ref reflects a little bit of inflation, and we know there's going to be some increases in labor costs, i.e. payroll over the next two years with, uh, labor contracts being negotiated.
Okay, so sorry, was, so we're paying the community paramedic a hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars?
No. Uh, also included in that price is, uh, the cost of vehicles. And actually, back again to our capital equipment pro, uh, uh, program, we have to, uh, staff, stock those vehicles with medical equipment, et cetera. Uh, so, uh, we, uh, pay into the, a bit of vehicle replacement fund for them, fuel, cellphone costs, administrative costs, et cetera, uh, on the current paramedics. And so that cost is, uh, uh, payroll benefits and then operating costs for the fire department to run those, uh, uh, units out there.
Okay, but, okay, so it's, yeah, but it looks like wages and benefits for one person is a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. Is that right?
It might be close to that. My understanding is that Bellingham just settled a new labor contract. I don't know the details of that. Um, but, uh, I don't do the, that is, uh, pretty close to what their benefits package is for a probably about a fifteen-year captain, uh, at the fire department.
Okay, so so this is what I, I, I respectfully, I, I'm trying to be supportive of, of the EMS system. But it's a, it's a struggle to approve stuff for which there I, I don't think there's a lot of information being provided. There's not a lot of detail. Um, but, you know, this is what we just went through with the, with the gurney issue is I, I'm just really struggling to understand the numbers and I, I would have wanted to see detail behind what makes up, you know, what is the base salary? Um, you know, what is the benefits? Stuff like that. It, it's just a struggle to approve the stuff with limited information.
Councilmember Ellenboss.
So I'm guessing that, that paramedic probably makes a hundred, a hundred and ten thousand a year. He probably gets about uh, twenty or thirty thousand in health benefits and other benefits, and then the rest is probably 401K and pension. So I that one eighty doesn't seem out of the, out of the ballpark for what you know, the s- the schooling and training that guy has, has to do. So I'm, I'm totally up to speed on the hundred ninety-two and hundred ninety-seven thousand and kudos for coming up with that off the top of your head, but I'm, I'm still lost on where the three eighty, the original three eighty-three. So we're approving another four hundred thousand, which is this one captain for twenty twenty-one and twenty twenty-two. But what, what's the original three eighty-three? What is, what that we're amending? What is that money going for? Uh, the Ferndale officer or paramedic?
So that was, uh, I think you, Councilmember Ellenboss, yeah. So that's for the current second paramedic at Bellingham Fire Department that we were already funding out of the levy. So we have a co, uh, uh, an ILA with Bellingham to support that second medic that we put on last year through the end of the levy. So that's, that's the three hundred eighty-three. The additional monies is for the additional paramedic, uh, through the end of the year. So in the contract as a whole, we're increasing that specific contract by that amount for the next two years for Bellingham.
Okay, then the, does the District Seven guy get the same amount of money or is it, do we know?
Uh, yes, their labor package is, uh, slightly less. I have to slightly, but is it in about the same ballpark? I, uh, like I said, I have in front of me, but I remember about a hundred and eighty-five thousand and council passed that uh, agreement back in, uh, August, uh, when we renegotiated that and, and finalized, uh, uh, their contract through the end of the levy through, uh, twenty, December of twenty-two.
Thank you. Councilmember Bird?
Mike, I'm curious how many calls the this individual's going to go on. So it, it kind of feels like Bellingham is offloading or just trying to offload a, a giant salary bucket to us. Yeah, I, I don't understand why we're getting someone that's been there for fifteen years that's high up versus for a community medic position getting some of it's there in their first three years. Um, it seems like that would be kind of a starting point in, in an intro level job versus one versus someone with fifteen years worth of tenure. So why is that, um, at the end of the day?
Yeah, thanks, Councilmember Bird. Um, the captain position is, uh, primarily a program manager position. Uh, it's a leader position, a leadership position for the team and the other two community paramedics. And that person integrates with our mid-level, uh, leadership on, uh, operations and administration the group. And remember, these guys is a, a collaborative effort between, uh, three paramedics with three social workers and three teams that are doing this work in the community along with our a nurse practitioner and, and Mular Christensen from the Grace teams. And so uh, when they're out there operating, uh, in the field, Captain, uh, Frank provides us a overhead supervision and support. Uh, he does, uh, case management, uh, as well. And each team carries a caseload of about twenty, uh, uh, patients, uh, per, uh, per team. And all of that is worked through the, what you guys have heard in other meetings through the, uh, sort of graduation or, you know, referral process among all the fire departments in the county. Uh, not only the entity of calls, uh, we see as many, uh, out in the rural areas. Uh, and in particular, Fire District Seven's team does this work in the rural areas along with, uh, the, uh, regular firefighter paramedic, uh, on East County. So, uh, so that's a program supervisor position, and that's why this position like that.
Like, I mean, that to me is very different than a community medic. When I, when you first mentioned this, in my head, I see someone that's actually going out on the calls individually, is hands-on and is taking care of things, not somebody that's sitting back at the office managing that person. Um, if we don't fund this position, we don't lose the people on the ground doing the work. We lose the person in the office doing the paperwork is, is what I hear you say. They were paying them. They would pay more for than what we pay our sheriff's officers during the line of fire, day in and day out for us.
Yeah, thanks for your, uh, comments. Uh, this is not a desk job position. Uh, I would, uh, uh, describe it more as a field supervisor. Uh, Joe Frank, Captain Joe Frank and Andrea Day are out every single day going on, uh, calls. And I have to remind, uh, them that the Grace, uh, uh, mission, the community paramedic mission is about addressing the frequent users of nine-one-one. So, uh, this is an appointment-based type of operation, not a co-responder or response over operation. And so they have very full caseloads, and that's exactly what the captain manages, which is where these caseloads go, who's going to deal with it. Uh, and then that captain is also, uh, integrated with Mular Christensen, the program manager for Grace, to uh, work on case management and make team decisions on how people are managed out there in the field. So no, this is, this is fully a field position out there.
Councilmember Kirchner.
Uh, I just wanted to ask how much money has been transferred out of Bellingham Fire Department or other fire departments into the EMS levy since it was established? I mean, it, is this, um, is this a not, you know, it's my first year, so if we did something in August for District Seven and now we're looking at doing something for Bellingham Fire Department? Um, are we just transferring the expenses from these individual fire departments into this countywide EMS levy funding source? Uh, and then the fire departments are kind of backfilling with other projects or things that they want to do outside of EMS? Is that sort of the direction we're going here?
Um, uh, not really, Councilmember Kirchner. Uh, the, uh, Watkin County EMS levy was voted into ordinance back in twenty sixteen. And we collect a point twenty-nine cents per mil on the levy from the homeowners. Um, and it's a, I, boy, I couldn't ta, off the top of my head what it is for the average three hundred thousand dollar house. I think it's about three hundred dollars, maybe a little bit less, two hundred dollars. And all of that money goes into the countywide levy to fund a countywide EMS system. In particular, those monies are giving to both Fire District Seven and Bellingham of a one-point-eight million dollar allocation for every, uh, paramedic that unit that, uh, they operate. And that's a agreed, uh, allocation. In fact, that's part of the levy planning we're going into, which is for the next levy, what would that, uh, levy rate be? And then what is the cost allocation per medic unit that we need to reimburse both the ALS groups for, the advanced life support groups? Also in that levy strategic plan that was voted on back then and put into ordinance, that described various, uh, projects, activities, initiatives used to uh, bolster or improve, uh, basic life support operations, which are the fire departments that spattered around the county. So the levy is essentially funding, uh, a larger part of the county's EMS activities, especially at the advanced life support level, which is a hundred percent. So the community paramedics come out of those two ALS departments, and that's how they get associated with additional costs uh, as related to, uh, doing those operations. And, uh, if you'll notice in the levy, there is a, a specific discussion, a specific reference to the allowance of uh, the levy paying into, uh, other costs associated with improving, uh, the operations, uh, and administration of the countywide EMS system.
So how come this position isn't already being funded by the levy? Why are, why are we here today now? Four years after the levy was passed, asking to fund this community paramedic if a levy was put in place to fund EMS services? Is it, is just a process?
Sure, then, great question. Thank you, Councilmember Kirchner, and, uh, yeah, no, and that's exactly why I think you see a little bit of a push to, uh, have that over in the levy. Uh, the, the, the community paramedic program in particular became this sort of an idea uh, or innovative technology back four years ago, and it actually started before the levy. But I think back then, it was very hard to, you know, uh, sort of guess what, uh, the levy would be. And people were very, uh, you know, pensive about spending taxpayers' money and wanting to keep it as sensible as possible. And the initial thing is that Bellingham has been a great partner in, in not overburdening the levy with these types of things too. So they kept that position in their department as long as they could. And it would probably still be there. However, COVID has just changed that. And so the levy, uh, having a healthy infund balance at the moment, obviously seems like a great place to fund that position and keep those services at a high level like we want. And, and it seems like a good idea to do that.
Councilmember Donovan.
Yeah, following up on some of the stuff, the council had some very public discussion of what, what these monies might go to before the vote. That got sixty percent. And that did include, um, covering some of the expenses that the city and other districts were having. And some of those conversations were awkward, but but it did get sixty percent of the vote. So there's, there's stuff like the administrative position that was hired. Um, that was consistent with the EMS, um, funds that the voters approved. Uh, I think this and other things we've done are consistent with that. And, and, um, last point, I guess, is that the, if we want to kind of, kind of benchmark, this is a, it's not a trade-off between us funding sheriff positions. Um, but it, but those are equally expensive. If you put in training and vehicles and, and benefits when we, um, hire a sheriff's deputy at a lower level than, than this sort of position, it's equally expensive. Um, I just want to get that there, but I, but I, 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 I do believe this is consistent with what the voters approved. So I'm going to support it.
Other discussion? Mr. Ellenboss.
Just cause, just because I want to say it like one time. I agree with Todd.
Okay, any other discussion? I don't recognize this guy without his glasses, so.
Just once?
Councilmember Brown.
I, well, just first of all, I just need to confirm, was that on the record? Was, was that being recorded? I think so.
Um, once a year, he's going to agree with me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. He must have had a couple of drinks before he started, but, um.
Whether you deserve it or not.
Mr. Mr. Hilli, I, 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 again, I just want to emphasize, I support the work of the EMS of, 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 of the Grace program and all the rest of it. I'm, I'm going to ask that in future, there is more detail in these requests. I, it's, it's, I, I don't think we're doing our job for the community when we're saying we're going to fund a position for a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. It needs to be, I, I understand this. You know, pension, I understand this health insurance and particularly, you know, there, there's some nuances of the challenges of being an EMS responder versus, you know, working in a retail store. Uh, there are absolutely fundamental differences. And they do get reflected in the pension plan and they, and the healthcare system, but they need to be in the documents that the public sees. Otherwise, I think you actually hurt the system. So, um, there needs to be more transparency. There needs to be more data.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, Councilmember Brown, and I, I, I will commit to providing more detail for you. And I do want to reassure the council that uh, some of these decisions are really not made in a vacuum. I have a huge amount of process that gets that stuff to here, uh, including our technical advisory board, as well as our EMS oversight board, uh, who sends these recommend, recommendations to council. But to your point, uh, Councilmember Brown, absolutely. I, I'll be glad to provide more detail in these future deals.
Further discussion? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Earl Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Krishner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
That passes six to one. Do you have anything more, Tyler?
Barry, there's the supplemental item that was emailed over. I have that number in front of me, right? So we didn't get that tonight or this afternoon. The, uh, it's always passed three zero for us to discuss in general. I'll move for discussion. This is similar to the twenty-four in context to, this item has not been discussed. No questions have been answered or asked, and no that presentation has been given, so that still may exist. But I will move for approval for discussion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Mr. Brown, seconds. Discussion on that motion.
Barry, do you mind reading that in?
I don't have it.
On the agenda?
I do not have it.
I don't have it either.
Would you like me to read it in?
I can do that for you.
Yeah, please go ahead.
Request authorization to award bid number twenty-dash-five-five an enter into contract for the supply and installation of interior carpet and paint at the Watkin County Central Plaza Building with CCI Inc. And in parentheses, CCI Inc. is located in Sultan, Washington, in the amount of one hundred and thirteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-five dollars. And that's AB twenty twenty dash five nine four.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second on that. Discussion. Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I'd like to ask that this be delayed, and my reasons are, uh, twofold. Um, one, one is I, I'm not sure it's essential to spend the money just now. And the second is, I would like to do anything we can to reduce unnecessary occupancy of people in the building at the moment. They got, you know, the idea of having work, workmen coming in there and um, huffing and puffing while they're moving, you know, rolls of carpet and so forth. I don't think it's a necessary risk at this point. So I'd like, I'm not against the project, I'd just like to defer the project.
I'll second that motion.
Is that a motion, Mr. Brown, to hold or?
Yes, it is.
And it's seconded, okay? Um, Ms. Rob Nye, go ahead.
Uh, thank you, council. Um, a couple of things I'd like to bring to your attention. This is a, a two thousand and twenty uh, mid-bianium item. So if we delay this action, this money goes away. It was a funded item with refunding. And one of the reasons we're bringing it forward, we, we, we thought a long and hard about whether or not we should bring this forward. But one of the reasons we're bringing it forward is because there's an awful lot of folks not in the building right now. This is actually. This is actually a very good time for us to do it. And so that is one of the reasons we brought it forward. We also thought we'd get some favorable um, contract bids, which we did, which were within our budget. So that is why we brought it forward at this time. And if we, if we don't spend the money now, we'll have to come back and ask for it at a different time. And it's REIT funds, not general funds.
Councilmember Bird?
Yeah, yeah. Rob, for record, money doesn't go away. It still sits in the account and spent, we, we just have to go through the process of reauthorizing it, correct?
Yeah, we.
It's not a grant funding that is contingent on, okay. As far as preferred pricing or, or getting a deal on pricing due to timing, can you give me an idea of what you budgeted or what you anticipated the cost to be and where we're at today with the bids?
We, we anticipated this was about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. So it came in just underneath our budget amounts. To give you a little perspective of what this is, we have to carpet this building. And if you've been in the public defender's building, we have to carpet with the furniture in place. So they actually just lift it up, put carpet towels underneath it, lower it down. And we make them do all of that work in the evening and on Saturdays. So if there are people in there working, the, the, the contractors aren't in at the same time. So we're paying a premium to have this done off-hours, and we're leaving the furniture in place. If that building was not occupied, this would be substantially cheaper. That's, that's, that's the, the way we have to do business in an occupied building.
Councilmember Donovan?
The, the motion was to, to delay or hold this, I guess, is that correct? So I, I'd speak against the motion. Um, nothing personal, Mr. Brown or Mr. Bird, but I, um, I respect the facilities, folks, and, and, and their proposals that come to us with this. And it does seem a bit time-sensitive. Um, so I would just recommend that we go forward with this. I mean, I just, I'll, I'll put it, I think Rob knows a bit more about carpet and getting bids for carpet than, than the rest of the folks in this council do.
Councilmember Brown first, and then Ellenboss.
Yeah, I wasn't aware from this, that you were going to do this after hours.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
I, it seems like a pretty good time to do it um, with less people in the building. It, um, too bad it's a company out of Sultan and not, you know, right here in Bellingham or Linden or Ferndale.
Any further discussion on the motion to hold? Mr. Bird?
Rob, just for my clarity, so if we do it now with this contract, they'll be able to come in and do it right now during the day versus if we had to do it later, they'd be doing it at night when no one was there?
No, we'll, we'll still do it under the contract provisions, which would be nights and weekends. However, there, there's just less people that we could possibly have interactions. You know, they're going to come in at five o'clock, there's an awful lot of people that work late in that building under general circumstances, non-COVID circumstances. Um, they work very long and, and uh, you know, continuous hours. And, and right now, a lot of those folks are doing that at home. So it's just, it's just more convenient for us to do it right now when less people are not in the office.
Mr. Brown?
Yeah, I withdraw my motion.
Does the second of the motion agree?
Yes.
Okay, the motion is withdrawn. We're back to, uh, motion to approve. Discussion? Okay, let's vote.
Can you clarify who made the motion? Kathy and I are on the same wavelength.
Uh, Rod withdrew his motion, and Tyler withdrew his second.
So who, is there a motion?
Original.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I'm not sure we needed a second.
We did get one, I believe.
Second was.
Okay, I'll second it.
Anyone remember seconding?
I'll second it just to get it done.
Let me clear, what, what is the motion? The motion has to approve the.
To approve, yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes you down to sleep.
All right, we're on to the normal finance agenda items. So the first item will be A B two-zero-two-zero-five-three-five, ordinance amending the project budget for the East Smith Hannigan Road Intersection Improvement Fund, request number one, that passed in committee three-zero, and I so moved.
Okay, that motion is on the table. Discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
That passes seven-zero.
The next item is A B two-zero-two-zero-five-three-six, ordinance amending the project budget for the Marine Drive Locust Path to Allerwood Ave Reconstruction Fund, request number one, that passed in committee three-zero, and I so moved.
Okay, that's Marine Drive, not Marin. But anyway, uh, okay, we got that motion. Discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes seven-zero.
Barry, you gotta give me some credit here. I'm struggling with my, uh, day two of braces, so.
Your what?
The day two of having, uh, I got a visual on hand thing, so. You're messing up the tongue speech thing, it doesn't feel right.
I heard marine, not Marin.
Okay, okay. I heard Marin.
I feel like I'm blurting nonstop. All right, the next item is, uh, A B two-zero-two-zero-five-four-two, amend, uh, ordinance in Silver Lake Park Improvement Fund, request number two. This item was held in committee three-zero.
Okay, we have that motion? Discussion? Councilmember Donovan?
It was held in committee, which I'm, I'm totally, I just want to get a public why it was held in committee.
Yeah, thank you, Todd. It, it was held because we were looking for more information on a breakdown of, of costs. Um, the costs was roughly rounded up, one-point-six-ninety dollars for fourteen, um, well, for eight bathrooms and six showers, as well as some septic improvements in a well. So we wanted a better breakdown on what that funding was for, because it seemed like a high dollar about to be spending for, for that number of units.
Go ahead, Mr. Donovan.
Dana, and we, uh, staff does not have it as held in committee. We have it coming forward to the council without a recommendation.
That's what I have on my script as well.
I will then move that it is held, uh, for committee to get more information, because I.
I think that Mike was going to come forward tonight with some additional information.
I will, I will remove my motion until we hear from Mr. McFarlane.
Mr. McFarlane, go ahead.
Good evening, council members. Uh, we sent out a packet this afternoon that was emailed uh, to all, all the council members in terms of a breakdown, uh, what it entailed. Um, additionally, not in that packet, but we were able to check with the city of Bellingham Parks and Rec on their latest restroom building. And that, that particular building is at Cordada Park. That, uh, came out to be four-hundred-and-eighty-nine thousand dollars, and that is a three-stall restroom. Whereas, um, the park, the building we're looking at, uh, is considerably larger. Uh, theirs was six-hundred-and-nineteen square feet, we're looking at, uh, fifteen-hundred-and-forty-two square feet. Uh, as I mentioned, it was three stalls, ours have, uh, ten stalls or stools and, and, uh, urinals along with six, uh, showers. Additionally, we need an onsite septic system for this particular building and with the additional costs. Um, the breakdown on a square foot basis, um, that particular building was, that the city put up was seven-hundred-and-ninety dollars a square foot. Uh, our cost is nine-hundred-and-seven dollars to nine-hundred-and-sixty-nine. Um, we have not bid the project yet, so we don't know what the final cost will be, but that, that's a comparison. Um, the information that Rod Lamb, who's our design and development supervisor, had sent over not only showed the building itself, but kind of gave the breakdown in terms of why, um, this building, uh, is, is there. I think there's some compliance issues in terms of, uh, the size of the campground. Um, this serves both the, um, uh, group camp area as well as our regular, our largest campsite or campground in Maple Creek. Um, again, keeping in mind, this is a commercial building. It gets, as we all know, we've been in, uh, public restrooms, they get a lot of abuse, um, a lot of cleaning. Um, and then either fixtures and ju, and just the construction needs to be much greater than residential or, or some other building, um, structures that we have out there. Uh, we think this is a good time to bid, um, going forward on that. And it's a great project for, uh, local contractors, and we've had a lot of interest. The information that was provided showed the, uh, local interest in the Red Mountain Restroom Shower Building, which is a little bit smaller building, but, uh, similar to this one.
Councilmember Brown?
I'm moving approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Discussion, Mr. Bird?
Mike, can you give, what was the breakdown? How much are we actually spending on like the septic versus the building?
Uh, what we have, um, broken down, um, in here, uh, I don't have the septic, the OSS system broken out of there. The, um, cost of the shower, um, uh, building itself i, is, is one-million-four-hundred-and-two, um, estimated. Um, there is a contingency in there of ninety-seven thousand, uh, three-hundred-and-fourteen. Uh, there are some, uh, water system upgrades that we need to do in the park, uh, in addition to accommodate this building, but some other projects that we have, that's twenty-two thousand. Uh, part of the cost, and that is our direct billing for our design and development supervisor who does capital projects, and that his position is bonded out of, uh, um, REIT two projects. So, uh, that's forty-three thousand on there. Um, so that comes up to the total of the, of the one-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. Uh, one-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-five thousand, yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Bird.
So the, the one-point-four million, that's just for the building, that's not the septic upgrade?
That, that, that is the OSS system. And, and, and so that, so this particular sin, system obviously is pressurized, it has to be pumped out into a field. Um, the system needs filters and screens that we have to clean, um, things get put down there. And there's also a grinder pump to send it over.
Mr. Lamb, did you have anything to add?
Oh, I was just going to also add, Mike, Mike got it. The one-point-four million dollars includes, um, all the onsite, um, utility improvements, with the exception of perhaps some upgrades to the well, um, that may be required by the Department of Health. Do you have an estimate of, of what the septic upgrade is then, as a percent, as a dollar amount of the one-point-four? You know, we, because we haven't bid it quite yet, and, and we're still in schematic design. I don't have a detailed cost estimate, but based on, um, our previous, um, architect's estimate and bids that came in um, for the Red Mountain facility, I'm anticipating that the septic represents about one-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars of the one-point-four million.
Mr. Brown, and then Mr. Donovan?
I, yeah, I just want to speak to why I'm supporting this, is that, that I think the most useful piece of information you've given us, Mr. McFarlane, is the seven bids for the previous facility. Uh, one-point-one-five-two up to one-point-four-nine-nine. I have to believe that those people, you know, in a competitive, you know, you've got multiple bids, I just have to believe that's what the cost comes in, because there's nothing particularly out of line.
Councilmember Donovan?
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd echo that. I thank Mr. McFarlane for providing that information, uh, that we didn't have in the morning, uh, in terms of the, the bids that came in this, um, uh, the question. And, and I love this, this is like my favorite Watcombe County park. Um, do you need to like get a totally new permit from the Health Department for the septic system? Or is it like already, I don't think, piggyback in from the one that's existing there? And, and are you confident you're going to get the, the permit for that, if it has to be a new thing?
I, it. Yeah. This will be a standalone permit because of the size of the facility and the number of users that it serves. It's, uh, rather than a local, um, county Health Department approval, it requires a state approval.
Anything else on this motion? Councilmember Bird?
Yeah, the, uh, I appreciate the work put into this. I'm going to vote no. To me, it feels like one of those items that shows up on CNN where the government agency went to Vegas with champagne and spent a ton of money that they shouldn't. Um, nothing, it's just a lot of money for bathrooms. And I understand that the market and their bids have come in to say that it's merited. But with that said, I would, it, it just doesn't feel like the right idea or the right thing to do. They, they, so, spending that much money on bathrooms, I really feel like taxpayers, if we ask them, would come back to us and say, hey, we'd like you to find a better use of funds than installing eight restrooms. So the, uh, thanks for the work that went into this, I appreciate it, but, yeah. I wish we could find a better way to do it.
Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, I'm going to support this. Um, I think, uh, you know, it's park use, like I said in the morning, up like thirty-nine percent. And this is one, you know, using the parks is going to be one of the things that people can do, and probably this next year, and hopefully not, you know, it's not the only thing we can do years after, but, um, and I think, you know, having the septic system and making sure the water is okay there. But, um, yeah, I think park use is going to be even more this year, so I support this, and to years to come.
Mr. Donovan?
So just for the, for the record, these are REIT funds, I believe, um, that are going to be, uh, paid for this. And it's actually a revenue generating, uh, project, so.
Any more comments, questions? Please call a roll.
Tyler Bird?
No.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
That passes five to two.
The next item on the agenda is A B two-zero-two-zero-five-four-three, ordinance amending the twenty-twenty-one Watcombe County Budget, request number one, in the amount of fourteen million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand dollars and fifteen, wait, fourteen million, seven-hundred-and-eighty-one thousand and fifteen dollars. That was approved in committee three-zero, and I so moved.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, comments? Discussion? Okay, let's vote on it.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
No.
Kathy Kir, sorry, Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
So that passes six to one.
Next item is A B two-zero-two-zero-five-five-six. Next item is AB two zero two zero dash five five six. Ordinance amending the twenty twenty Wacom County budget, request number twenty-two, in the amount of three million, five hundred twenty-four thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars. That was approved in committee three zero, and I so move.
Okay, discussion on that motion? Please call a roll.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
Next item is AB two zero two zero zero dash five six one. Sorry, backing up. Next item is AB two zero two zero dash five five six. Ordinance amending the twenty twenty Wacom County budget, request number twenty-two, in the amount of
That's what we just voted on.
Ah, shoot, I was wondering, okay.
You had it right the first time.
They're too close. Okay, thanks, Barry. Okay, go back. AB two zero two zero dash five six one. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement amendment one of Wacom County contract two zero one nine zero nine zero zero four between Wacom County and the City of Bellingham for the Lake Wacom homeowner incentive program, an amount of two hundred thousand. That was approved in committee three zero, and I so move.
Okay, discussion on this motion? Please call a roll.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
Next item is AB two zero two zero dash five six two. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Wacom County and the Wacom Conservation District for the Lake Wacom Homeowner Incentive Program Assistance. An amount of ninety-two thousand, ninety-five dollars. That passed in committee three zero, and I so move.
Discussion. Let's vote.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Passes seven zero.
The next item is AB two zero two zero dash five six three. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into an interlocal agreement between Wacom County and Wacom Conservation District for Pollution Identification and Critter and Correction Program. Non-dairy agriculture best pr- best management practices outreach and caution, an amount of fifty-seven thousand. Council acting as the Wacom County Flood Control District Board of Supervisors. That passed in committee three zero, and I so move.
Discussion. Please call a roll.
Ed Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
That passes seven zero.
All right. The next item is AB two zero two zero dash five six four. Request authorization for the county executive to enter into a contract between Wacom County and GSI Water Solutions, Inc. to conduct a peer review of the Linden-Everson Nuxak-Sumess Numerical Groundwater Model. Provide recommendations for improvements and additional work, an amount of one hundred three thousand, seven hundred dollars. Council acting as the Wacom Flood Control District Board of Supervisors. That passed in committee three zero, and I so move.
Discussion on this motion. Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Ben had his hand up.
Oh, sorry, Ben.
Sorry, Gary.
Yeah, sorry that I, I was a little slow on it, but I I guess, I I've, all along I've been asking for us to spend money on quantifying our aquifer, in-stream flows, blah, blah, blah. And thi- this is something, however, unfortunately. These are um. Computer modeling is is far from. I guess if if the, if this is what we're going to do, this is what we're going to do, but I think we can, I think we can do better than spending a hundred thousand dollars on review, so I'm going to vote for it, but I'd like I'd like more, more better science.
Councilmember Bird.
Yeah, Ben, thanks for bringing it up. Um. I'm sure with this item as well. I'm sure because when I I look at it, we're spending a hundred thousand dollars for another company to come in and review the work of the first agency that we hired to do the work. To me, that says that there's something wrong with the first amount of work that we did. And and so, it's like, what do you do there? But at the same time. I feel like if we went back out to the the market and did it all over again, it cost us way more. And so I I'd rather have two people tell me it's right for for a cheaper amount if we're concerned about it than going back out and doing it twice. And I don't know enough about this industry to know otherwise, so we, I think Gary gave a good, good reason earlier today, and that's what's pushing me over to a yes vote on this item, otherwise I would have been on the no category, but I wondered if John has anything to add since he joined us.
Mr. Hutchings, welcome.
Thank you very much. I actually, I think, uh, I just um. Echo what uh Mr. Bird said. Uh, the reality is that we know that the uh uh, the debate uh that will come s- at some point down the road will pit one group of scientists against other groups of scientists, and it's how that sort of works, and the idea is to make absolutely sure uh, that all the parties who are participating in uh, in creating the decision the decision-making science that will ground uh the uh, the solutions in the future are fully vetted uh, to whatever degree we can get them vetted, so that we can put aside the debate over the science. And get on to the policy, uh, the policymaking. That's really the uh, the idea behind all of this. Let's make absolutely sure that that we've vetted this to the highest degree possible and uh, and go from there.
Other discussion? Mr. Ellenboss.
Yeah, I I, and I don't disagree with that, John. I'm, I'm, I guess. I hear computer modeling and and that's what makes me um long for something more concrete. Um, that, that's, that's kind of my point, so uh, we don't need to debate much here, we'll just vote.
Anything else? Okay, we'll do it, we'll vote.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Passes unanimously.
All right, the last item I have on my finance agenda is AB two zero two zero dash five eight four. Resolution approving the twenty twenty-one recommended convention center allocations for tourism-related facilities and activities as defined through RCW six seven dot two eight dot one eight one six. That was approved in committee three zero, and I so move.
Okay, we have that motion, discussion. Okay, call a roll, please.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes. That passes seven zero. We'll move on now to uh council committee of the whole. Uh, we have AB twenty twenty dash five sixty-five, consideration of hearing examiner's recommendation on preliminary long subdivision application filed by Governor's Point Land LP, which is the Governor's Point subdivision. Uh, that was uh voted on today and moved recommendation, recommended to the committee, the the council, sorry. Um, and I would so move.
Second.
Discussion. Mr. Donovan.
Yeah, I, um, there has been a long uh history of of controversy over developing Governor's Point. And um, I think this is a pretty awesome uh proposal to really mitigate and limit development there. And in our hearing earlier this morning, uh these people were called out who are, I couldn't be here, who've been working on this, Amy Keenan, Royce Buckingham, and Ryan Erickson, uh staff folks have been working on this. Um, so I want to get that out there uh to acknowledge them, and the Wacom Land Trust, and Rand Jack, a- and Bob Carmichael, and mostly and this is, help me out here, because I, the, 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 the property owner who is um committed to this public access um that we discussed this afternoon.
Randy Bishop.
Say it again.
Randy Bishop.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, so I, so my thanks to all of those people um for something that generations from now um are going to be massively appreciated, so. Thanks, thanks to all you.
I might see Barry call on me and just go with it. So, um, I echo Todd, Councilmember Donovan on this, I what an amazing gesture. How often do you see something like that? There's not many opportunities where you get a piece of property like this one left on the ocean waterfront that's untouched at this size and just pristine, and and so many people would go in and develop the whole thing and and sell every last square foot of it um for top dollar, and the fact that the vast majority, what is it, ninety percent, over ninety percent, that he's donating to a land trust, so it can never be developed. And he's even gone so far as to move some of those, those ideal perfect lots off to other spots so that those perfect locations are available to the public for use. It's a phenomenal model, and I I really think it's um a testament, and I hope other people will look at that and and follow it and support it and thank you for his contribution and his donation to the public and to our children's future. It's, it's great, so thank you.
Other discussion? Councilmember Kirschner.
Yes, I just wanted to say I was on the council ten years ago when um Governor's Point was a pretty contentious issue as we were working through coming into compliance with the Growth Management Act, and that was one area that had to be downsized um to rural one and five acres. And um, at the time, it looked like it was um you know, never, nothing good would ever happen, and so I'm really happy to see ten years later where we're going to have um water extended by the City of Bellingham. We've got some um uh shorelines that setbacks that have been negotiated. Um, there will be some houses that sound like there'll be pieces of artwork out there. And then the ninety-eight acres, ninety-six acres of public space. Um, it makes me happy to see that after ten years, something good is coming to that property, so I'm happy to support this tonight.
Mr. Brown.
Yeah, I'm also very supportive, and I, and I thank Mr. Donovan for recognizing all the players. I, I'd just like to do double recognition for Rand Jack, is probably Rand's fingerprints are probably on every piece of conservation land in this community for the last two decades. And um, he does it for free, so as I said to him today. Um, I, I want him sitting on my side of the table if we're negotiating.
Other discussion? See none, please call a roll.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss.
Yes.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Tyler Bird.
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Uh, next item, AB twenty twenty dash five sixty-six was withdrawn. Um, the next item after that one is AB twenty twenty. Yes?
Gary, I'm going to go back to Kathy's earlier question about that. In finance, it's a recommendation, and we all still have to vote on it, so why is this different?
This was, well, A, it was a resolution, it had never been introduced.
But it's, it's on first night's agenda.
Okay, Dana, you want to lay in?
Sure.
Does the maker of it hold it?
Yeah, the, the person that proposed the resolution, the proposer of the resolution pulled it and did not want it to be considered anymore. We've done that with resolutions before. And we've done that with ordinance before, ordinances before prior to them actually being introduced by the council. So when the proposer of the ord- or the resolution doesn't even want it considered anymore, it's always been the council's practice that the proposer can withdraw it.
So Dana, I thought as soon as it was on the general meeting for the night. Did this not get introduced last time around?
No.
I thought we introduced it, no?
No.
Okay.
Okay, we'll move on to um, AB twenty twenty dash five forty-six. Uh, ordinance amending Wacom County Code two point nine eight, which is the Point Roberts Community Advisory Committee to revise membership and meeting procedures to broaden representation and improve transparency, and there's this was an amended version that was amended by committee. Um, and the uh committee of the whole recommended approval to the council. And I so move. Councilmember Kirschner, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, Mr. Brown, second, and Councilmember Kirschner.
I just wanted to um point out that we got some email today from some of the Point Roberts folks. We've been getting emails for the last two weeks, but um one of the points they made was that uh Executive Sedu is going to be visiting them and having a meeting up there. And they uh requested that we wait on passing this until after that meeting. Um, they also pointed out that this advisory committee was appointed by the executive. Um, so I just wanted to kind of see i- if we're stepping over our bounds to kind of get this pushed through tonight, or should we be waiting to see Executive Sedu's results? Just, just questions.
Since it's an executive appointment, and I, and Mr. Sedu has turned his camera on, I would hope that he'll share some insight of this.
Only, I'm not going there. Uh, they have a Zoom meeting. Uh, like a regular process, there's a vacancy. And uh, they want to conduct in their own committee uh, some kind of interviews. They invited me to listen in. Then they said that I should conduct. I said, no, I will not conduct the interviews. Because that's the, not, I will listen in when the committee member, the community members ask questions to the prospective candidates. But I still keep my prerogative when I make the uh appointment. Uh, because it's in that large position. And then they asked me, what is your criteria? And, and I have shared that with the council, what my criteria is. And I have shared with all of you, and I think some people from uh are listening from Point Roberts, and if they are not, this is on the tape. That is the very, this, this, this organization has been dysfunctional and which has been proven just recently, even, even one, even last few days, that how that how uh, uh, this is functioning. I think that I would recommend the council uh, that I can go through this process of listening to the candidates and everything. But I, I like what Mr. uh, Brown has proposed to increase that. Now, the fundamental thing, I think that if you can give me a couple of more minutes, this is, this is because we have spent so much time on this and, and the community is frustrated. Because the, the, the Tax Payers Committee, the uh, the uh, there are three committees. Uh, Tax Payers Committee, uh, now I'm drawing a blank. Uh, the Chamber of Commerce and one is more is uh, Voters Committee, I believe. Originally, it was asked that they should have, they had, they can appoint one member each from their organizations and two members will be appointed by the executive and make it functional. Those three organizations have members just as much as they have the Board of Directors, means if they have three Board of Directors, they have only three members. Like they have lost the following from, from the general public, what they were there for. When, when I met in, in early of my term, I said, can you show me that you have, say fifty members of each of your organization, full paying members, not just put a name on the list and say, these are my members. Where people actually make an application, say, I want to be member of the Voters Committee, I want a member of the chamber and there's a dues paying or not paying, it doesn't matter. And it hasn't happened, so giving them right to appoint one member to the PRCAC doesn't seem fair. And, and the two at large members appointed by the uh, uh, executive are in minority then. So I think we need more serious reform there uh, than just doing that. And one of the, my thought is that why don't we appoint all seven members at members at large between the executive's office and the council? We can come up with something and uh, and, and maybe the people who have not served any position in any of these committees for the last five years. Let's give it to some new group of people, because there are passionate, passionate residents there. And I don't know, I'm just making a suggestion, I know tomorrow I'm gonna be in the social media and everybody's gonna blast me for saying this thing. Uh, you know, I'm taking away from the community, this and that, I'm not taking away anything, I'm just making suggestions very openly. That we should, it is our responsibility to take some reforms and, 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 and make an effort. We have uh, Birch Bay, which is much, much bigger. We have Candle, which is much, much bigger. Of course, they are unique because they are cut off from us. But the, they have usurped the council's time very disproportionately. And nothing has come, maybe I'm going too far. Mostly, everything is controversial. Anything starts there is controversial. So how do we bring that kind of environment there? It's not that people are not capable of uh, reaching consensus. But we have to make an effort jointly between council and the executive, and I'm willing to, to listen to. And this is a good start, is actually having four members by at large and, and, and the three other members, I, I, I really feel that those organizations have to prove their credibility that they represent the population, not just because they have a name, I, we have a Chamber of Commerce. How many members are there? I'm a Voters Association, how many members they have? Not just because we have a name, there could be another five names, PRIIBC. That's a new name. You know, and why not, they should be able to uh, send one person, just because they are an organization. So I, I request the council uh, that I, I'm not gonna suggest what you do tonight. Uh, I think that we need to take something very serious action. And, and I would even venture, if you, if you trust me with this and give me some time, maybe I can, my office can come up with some proposals. That's, that's all I, how far I can go.
You support this, you support this, Executive Sedu, this ordinance?
At, at, at the minimum, but I'm saying this is not going to solve the problem because there are still, still three members.
Sure.
Are representing organizations, they are pretending to be representative of the people. And we are not sure of that.
I just want to make sure we're not passing something that makes it more difficult, so thank you for letting me know about your support.
Mr. Donovan, then Mr. Byrd.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the executives' comments there and I don't, I don't want to disparage um, any organizations claiming to speak for the community, but as a council member, I, I got a little, I mean, I think Zappal came up with, he said, but I got, I got the PRIIBC, the PRTA, the PRVA, the PRCC, Chamber of Commerce, and the PRCAC, and it could be their PRTFWC, which is my Point Roberts, two folks with coffee, I mean, that, we're kind of overwhelmed by, I don't know who speaks with what acronyms for Point Roberts, so I, I think having more spots on there that are at large, um, more representation is good representation and maybe this, and this is nothing to disparage the folks on the PRCAC or any of these other acronyms that I really have trouble keeping track of. But um, I, I think the more we open it up, that'd be good, so I support this and I don't know that this is the end of, of it. Um, and I really encourage the community, and, and they, they need like a city council, they don't have that, where they can elect them and we just sort of respond to them. So it's, it's an awkward position for all of us, so. But I, I, I think Mr. Brown's proposal gets a little bit closer to something we can respond to.
Mr. Byrd.
Thanks. Okay, I'm on the same boat, we, we all on this, in context to like, we've spent a lot of time on this. It's convoluted and we don't know whoever presents who or how big of a group those are or what the community actually thinks or anything else, but if we kind of roll back the wheel to when this started a couple of years ago with the garbage thing specifically, take it, I want to give you the context that I see it in, because I think I see it in a similar context to the, a portion of those individuals. Something happened that they didn't like and that PRC brought it forward as a recommendation to the council. And when that happened, we didn't necessarily listen to that group, we only listened to the PRC. And at that time, Councilmember Brenner and I, and Executives to do as well, we talked a lot about like, hey, can we get this on the ballot? How do we actually create a structure on the PRC so it's representative of the whole community? Because the people who were coming forward at that time said, it's not. It's representative of the garbage company who sits on this and chairs it and his friends. And it doesn't represent us. And the council at that time said, you know, we don't want to deal with this, we don't have enough time, it, you know, whatever reason, we didn't pick it up. What we told them is we need to know that it's more than you. So they went out and they created the PRIIBC, their own organization that can be competitive to PRC, right? And they came forward and said, okay, here's all these people that agree with us in this new organization and we'd like you to take this up. And we looked at it and said, well, no, we only deal with the PRC because that's our advisory group, so you need to go through them. And so what'd they do? They went back and they got involved in those committees and they got appointed to the PRC. And then they came forward as the PRC. And now what have we said? No, we don't like that decision because we don't feel like it's right. And so now we're passing rules to more limit the positions based on all of the things we've told them over the last couple of years that they should do, which is the correct process. It very much does feel like we don't like a group of people because for one reason or another and we're specifically creating rules to make it more and more difficult versus addressing the core problems. Okay, to me, that is discrimination. If, if we're applying rules to a group of people just because we don't agree with them or if we're applying rules to one group of individuals differently than we apply them to everyone else. I said this in the committee earlier, I very much support the rules and the thought process here as far as transparency. I think it's something we should put across the board on every committee as well as the council. That's fantastic. But you can't do that selectively to one group because we don't like them. And it really, based on the history and our track record of dealing with these people, regardless of whether that's your intent, regardless of whether that you see it that way or feel that way, understand that there's a big group of people up there that do feel that way and that's the reason they keep coming forward. So instead of maybe doing this, I love the idea of giving Executives to do the role, like, to go out there and solve this and come back to a solution. The, but I love the idea, like, can we, I don't know that we can make them form a city and have a city council, but how do we get that group and that board to be balanced and representative of the different aspects and the different interests? So when ideas come forward, we know it's been well vetted, that they've all gone out and, and got their little sections involved and, and brought into the table with input and that it's thoroughly worked its way through the community or the community and come forward with that understanding and that work behind it versus being one-sided or not. We'll never have that if we keep working this process. And I think the biggest issue is that not only will we never have that, but we're gonna continue to create a system in which we give those people no recourse for having their, their issues and their, their positions heard. All we do is continue to further limit it and make it impossible for them. That's not democracy, it's not a representative republic. It, I don't believe that's what we're here for. And so I, I'd ask you to hold off and not do this. You know, do it all together for everyone or don't do it at all. But, and, and give the executive the opportunity to go out there and find us a better solution because this isn't it.
Mr. Brown, and then Ms. Frazee.
Yeah, I think there's a little bit of revisionist history going on here. The ninety percent of the people in Point Roberts who have written to us do not support the position of the PRCAC on a, on the particular issue regated regarding garbage. That to me is, is a clear demonstration that the PRCAC is not representative of the community. The fact that they may have changed the leadership to people who want to reduce the garbage service does not mean those people have assumed their, a role that reflects the community. So the, the this committee has failed in its fundamental, its number one task, which is to re- represent the community. And that's why, that's why it needs to be expanded to include greater representation.
Councilmember Frazee.
Yes, fir- first I want to say, you know, I, I love going, I always say this, I love going to Point Roberts, I love the passion of everyone there. And um, even the first time I went up there in twenty eighteen, I, I, I prepared myself for garbage, like, anything I could know about garbage. And in this big group, that didn't even come up um, for the whole community. And I was surprised because that's all I heard about, so I think having, you know, first of all, having more people on the um, PR, PR, but yeah, that one, the one that you're bringing forward, um, you know, two more people and making sure more voices. And you know, just watching that last, it wasn't the last committee, but the one that the garbage idea came up and how the agenda wasn't published before. I, I mean, just, just having um, Councilmember Brown's proposal come forward that, you know, okay, the agenda has to be published a week before, I think that would help get more commu- community members involved, because even during the meeting, someone said, well, I think the uh, chamber would like to know about this, and they're like, well, we're, we're talking about it now. Um, and like, that person on the committee did not have the chance to tell even the chamber that they were gonna be talking about garbage. So just, just that, having a week in advance, having two extra people from the community to balance it, um, I, I think, I think that would help. I, I want to say like, oh, let them, let, let Point Roberts decide, but I think this might be a start and maybe we can make changes from there. But, but I think we do need more voices because in Point Roberts, because it's such a small community, you know, you get one strong voice and it can, in different groups and it can kind of dominate and we, we need more people involved and I think this might be the first step.
Councilmember Byrd.
Okay, adding two people is, I, I think a good idea. Especially if we can find a way to select them so that they're, we have the diversity on that committee. The, and again, I'm not opposed to the ideas and the principles behind this, I'm opposed to applying them selectively to one group because we don't like what we've seen from that group. They, that to me is really hard. And it, right, I mean, that, I the number of emails that you get is not representative of community or a community's opinion. It's representative of the people aware of the topic in the community at best. And it, it's representative, at worst, of all of the people or a very selective group of very opinion people, opinionated people who are friends across the entire world with access to an email that want to send that email in to sway you. If that's how we're gonna make our decisions, I could set up a program in two hours that'll generate a couple thousand votes or emails to you the next time we have something that comes up. And you can count those or I, I could just give you the number afterwards, right? But there's no way unless we're going back to verify that and who they are and that we have everyone captured, that you could ever use that as anything other than you know, I don't know. If we want to really know what the community thinks, we have to do something other than emails, whether that's putting it on the ballot or actually sending a survey out to every single door and getting eighty percent of them to respond or something else, but it, it can't be emails that someone, a form mail that someone copied and sent to us, I mean, that you can't say that's ninety percent of the community when, when we just don't know that's the case. It's, it's ninety percent of the emails that you received and counted.
Councilmember Brown.
It's, it's a, it's a valid point, but you got the same emails as I did because the emails were addressed to the council talking about the issue of, of, of the, the desire to change the garbage collection. What I did do is I, I did a couple of things. One is I look, I, where an address was provided, I looked up who owned the address and where did they live. And the other, and if there wasn't that provided, I would Google the email address and look and see if I could work out where the person lived. Almost, almost exclu-, I don't think I found one person who supported the current garbage program as it is, who didn't live in Point Roberts. And I struggled to find more than probably two or three people who wanted it changed, who didn't live in Canada. Right, so I, I, they, and the, and the ones that supported the program were not form letters. If you look at them, they, they pretty much all look like they're individually written. Right, so you got the same emails, they're in your email box.
Councilmember Donovan.
Well, I was just gonna get back to the motion that's on the table here and not about, we got more emails, we can generate more emails. Um, this is in our packet. Um, we had a good discussion this afternoon about uh, alternate proposals that can maybe come forward, so I'd look forward to other council members bringing those, but um, right now, we've got this motion and I hope we can vote on it. And I'm supporting it.
Okay, with that quiet ripple, we will go ahead and vote.
Ann Ellen Boss.
No.
Carol Frazee.
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner.
Yes.
Red Brown.
Yes.
Barry Buchanan.
Yes.
Oliver Byrd.
No.
Todd Donovan.
Yes.
That passes five to two. Uh, next item is AB Our next item is AB twenty twenty dash five twenty-four, an ordinance creating a child and family wellbeing task force. What's the wishes of the council?
Very.
Unmute. Can't hear you. Unmute.
I will bring it up in the new business. Continue your, your regular agenda, please.
Okay. So discussion on the family, uh, child and family wellbeing.
I'll move approval.
Okay, we have a motion. Second. Discussion. Ms. Frazee.
Yes, I just want to say, you know, having the this task force is the first step for our child and family action plan to start moving. So I support this.
Mr. Brown.
I, I support it with one concern, which is on subsection C, subsection B. The end of it and says the words including compensation for time. We don't compensate any committee or board on the county. And this open, this, this opens up a can of worms if we decide to selectively compensate people on this committee.
Councilmember Frazee.
Um, I'm not sure, does, with generations forward, any of those, does Dana or Jill know if we compensate? I know for families, we're trying to get more families involved to give more voice. So I'm not sure. Are there other committees or anything where people are compensated?
The only, the only board members that I can think of or that I'm aware of that receive any compensation is the Board of Equalization.
And the WTA.
But that's not a county board.
Well, that's true. Yeah, that's true. Councilmember Kirschner. Can't hear you.
Uh, could I ask Councilmember Brown to tell me where that is in the ordinance again?
So if you go to under be it for further ordained, item C, develop recommendations for, and then subsection B, recommend ways to fully integrate. And at the end of that, it says the words including compensation for time.
Okay, so that's in the, I see where it is. Okay. It's not actually in the code change. It's in the language of the ordinance.
Well, it's an, it's an ordained.
Right.
So it would, it would have the intent of law because it's not actually in the code, but it'd have the intent.
Councilmember Donovan.
Yeah, I, I'm so much for bringing this up and I'm, and I, because I did not notice that, but I don't think that's too, and I guess this question is that to compensate uh, people would be on the task force or people who are coming to testify before the task force. So I know this has been an issue with the potential racial equity commission that we have expectations that people come to meetings because they, you know, can pay for childcare or they, they're of means to be able to participate in these things. And one way to broaden the, the, the potential participants is to, and it's new. It's not, not something we're doing. So, yeah, it is maybe a can of worms, uh, could be to compensate people for their time to come to meetings. So I'm, that said, I, I don't know if this section C is to recommend processes against, where's it again? Right? It was, it was on line four, page two.
Capital, capital C, little b.
Recommend ways to fully integrate parents. So it's a recommendation that would include a compensation for time. So I don't think that's binding us to do that. But I think the recommendation, and again, I, this, this is not something I've been tracking, but that there are committees where we, or hearings where we expect people to come to, that they can't. So I think I, I may have read this wrong, but the recommendation is that potentially not codifying this, it's a recommendation that there'd be ways to compensate people for their time for like childcare to, to be able to come to a meeting. I don't, I don't think it's about the members of the committee, but, but I could be wrong. Maybe we need more information about that.
Councilmember Brown.
Well, I, I read it as committee because I, I, I don't know any circumstance on any board or commission where you compensate people for testifying. You could, you would come, you may compensate committee members, but.
No, I agree. It's, it's a new thing. And it's a, it's a, I think, and I might be reading this wrong. But there is a sense that a way to broaden participation and, and I'm not endorsing it or condemning it. I'm just saying that maybe where it's come from.
But let me say, I, I would be open to a future recommendation to provide childcare onsite so someone could come. But I think I, 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 the idea of compensating just the members of this committee and agreeing to it now, when we don't compensate people, say the planning commission who give up a considerable amount of time. You know, that's, it's just problematic for me. I mean, I've, I've actually thought the planning commission members should be, can, should be eligible for health insurance for the amount of time they devote. But.
Again, and, and I'm sorry, Kathy, I don't, I don't know if we know this is intended for the members of the commission or members of the public testifying. So I think we need to find that out.
Councilmember Kirschner.
Yeah, I mean, when, the way I read this, Councilmember Brown, is that this is just one of the things that the committee we're setting up today is going to look at developing recommendations back to us about. And so they're going to recommend policy and program review process. They're going to recommend ways to fully integrate parents, caregivers and stakeholders from underrepresented communities in county committees, this one and others and work groups, including the possibility of compensation for time. They're just going to recommend it, you know, make recommendations and they're going to recommend processes to ensure consideration and prioritization of child and family needs and county funding decisions. So this to me looks like it is kind of the, the road path that this committee is going to look at and not necessarily that we are saying this committee is going to get compensated for their time. We're going to ask them, look into this and find out what, what's the roadblock for people in underrepresented communities? Why aren't they participating? Would compensating for time, would providing childcare, would something else help them be more able to do that? So that's how I read it.
Other discussion? Councilmember Ellenboss.
Well, I feel like this committee would probably be more appropriate than some of our other committees. At some point I'd just look at it and think that we're turning ourselves into Point Roberts with committees and, and commissions and boards and people making recommendations that overlay people rate making recommendations um, to the people elected to make decisions. And if we were eliminating a few boards with this ordinance, I might support it, but we got too many. I don't, I don't support this.
Councilmember Donovan and then Councilmember Frazee.
We did have a legend, she did a report for the hundred and whatever commissions and boards and various things we have about some that could be eliminated and we could find that and get it to Ms. Ellenboss. But that, that was something that council did, I think about four years ago, five years ago.
Councilmember Frazee.
Yes, Councilmember Ellenboss, maybe we, we do need to get rid of some committees and things like that. Maybe that's, needs to be a review. But I think especially now with COVID, you know, making a focus for child and families is really important. And I feel like this is the first step in doing that.
Mr. Ellenboss. Wow, no, you're really Darth Vadering. Not really. Maybe, maybe a little. I got nothing. So I, doesn't anybody else copy that?
Rod should put that helmet on behind him and translate.
Yeah, put that thing on there.
It might help. I'll tell you, it's not that good.
Yeah, we didn't get any of that, Ben. Sorry.
Try it again, Ben.
Okay, any further discussion? Brown.
So let me, I just want to, if this would be accepted as a friendly amendment. Uh, change the words including compensation to time to, in, including accommodation for childcare. And whether that is providing childcare or reimbursing for the expenses of having childcare within the meetings.
Okay, I'm going to give Ben another swing at the ball here.
Well, I want to, I want to address Rod's friendly amendment proposal. And what I would say is I could accept it if you just added an and compensation for childcare onto the end of the sentence. Would that work for you? Compensation for time and childcare.
About war.
But my concern is just, how do we say to another committee member on another committee that we're not willing to discuss compensation from them? That's, that's my challenge. It's just, we have lots of committees.
I, I think though that this is looking at all the committees, Councilmember Brown. This is to give us recommendations for all of our committees and work groups to see if we're, if we're staffing our committees and work groups with the underrepresented communities. And if we're not, to find out why and then to make recommendations on how we can make that better. So I don't think it's solely to this committee. It's, it's a broader recommendation.
All right.
That's how I read.
I, I will accept your amendment, friendly amendment.
Okay, Mr. Ellenboss, let's see if you can motor through it again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Much better.
Verizon for the win. So thi- this is going to pass. That's obvious. Because I'm, I'm of the minority opinion here, but I'm going to challenge you guys to, to prove me wrong by asking you guys to make sure that we appoint people into these positions that are going to actually be looking to solve problems instead of, uh, instead of moving a political football like we see from a lot of these boards and commissions. So um, well, I would love to see us get rid of some that I feel are overlapping and unhelpful. Uh, that probably won't happen either because all we do is grow and grow and grow, but let, let's, let's really put some folks in these positions that are gonna, um, that are going to be looking at solving a problem from a nonpartisan perspective.
Councilmember Donovan.
Oh, just say that Ms. Kirschner worked pretty hard to get the ordinance crafted to accomplish that.
Any further discussion? Councilmember Frazee.
I would just like to echo that, adding different people to the task force. Ms. Kirschner brought those forward, so I think that will help.
Any further discussion? Okay, please call roll.
Yes.
Point, point of order, we're, we're voting on the amended version.
It was a friendly amendment if I heard right.
Right, so it, okay, so that's what we're voting on.
Yeah, yeah.
Now it's the and.
Yeah, and.
So could you reread that? Councilmember Brown.
Well, I think it was Ms. Kirschner's, uh, compensation for time and childcare, I think is what you said, wasn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Ellenboss.
Carol Frazee?
Oh, one moment, one moment, Mr. Ellenboss.
So we're, we're voting on the amendment right now, not on the ordinance.
It was a friendly amendment.
So we're voting on the ordinance as amended?
Yes.
Well, how, how can?
I don't think so. I think we have to vote on the amendment first.
Absolutely.
Well, then it's not a friendly amendment.
No, the amendment that Red made was time and I don't, I just scribbled part of it out. Accommodations for childcare and then Kathy moved to add a friendly amendment and put and uh, somewhere.
Oh, okay. Yeah, it's a, so it's a friendly amendment on an amendment.
Or if we'd have the original name removed and then have it as one amendment.
So I, I withdraw any amendment I may have offered and accept Ms. Kirschner's friendly amendment to add the words end time.
I made the original motion to approve the ordinance. So maybe Councilmember Brown makes the amendment, we vote on it and then we vote on the whole thing. Because I don't think I can do a friendly amendment on my own motion.
It would be weird.
All right, so for capital C subsection, little b, I, I make the motion to add the words end childcare at the end of the sentence.
Second. Okay, so that amendment has been proposed. Um, any discussion, any further discussion on the amendment? Seeing none, please call a roll.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ann Ellenboss?
No.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
That passes six to one. Our next item is AB twenty twenty dash five ninety-eight.
We're going to the main motion again.
Oh, I'm sorry, sorry. Yes, back to the main motion to approve now. Um, any discussion on that? Okay, please call a roll.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
No, I mean, yes, sorry.
Tyler Bird?
I don't know. Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes, and I'm glad I don't have to chair this stuff.
Ben Ellenboss?
I'm going to vote no, but at least we have fun while we do it.
Yeah, this is lots of fun. That passes six to one. Uh, the next thing is AB twenty twenty dash five ninety-eight, a resolution reflecting the diversity of the county's population by improving written accessibility of public space signage. I'm a little confused by this because in my paperwork, it says for introduction. Uh, but yet it's not under the introduction heading, so maybe Dana, could you explain that?
It, it is on for introduction. It's under that section that's added by revision. So it, it is an introduction item, but it, it's up under that other heading.
Okay, so then we have two items for introduction, that one and the one that's, uh, the ordinance granting the city of London a non-exclusive franchise for industrial. Kind of say.
That's correct. Yep.
Two items, I would entertain a motion to introduce.
Excuse me, I believe that you may have missed the council appointment for the drainage improvement district, item five five two.
Oh, you're right. Okay, we'll go to that AB twenty twenty dash five five two, council appointments to boards, commissions and committees. This is an appointment to drainage improvement district number seven, supervisor position three, and the applicant is Rod Stumpf.
Mister, I moved to appoint Mr. Stumpf.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to appoint Mr. Stumpf. Any discussion on that motion? Councilmember Ellenboss.
I've actually worked with Mr. Stumpf on several occasions. I think it'll be wonderful for the drainage district, district. Hope that doesn't sway anyone from voting for him.
Any other discussion?
I appreciate Mr. Ellenboss's endorsement of that.
Okay, please call roll.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirschner?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. Now we're back to our. Now we're back to our two introduction items, so we have a motion to introduce.
So.
Okay, we have a motion to introduce and a second, any discussion? Councilmember Donovan?
I'm having to introduce, we're introducing a resolution, it doesn't need to be introduced, but I'm happy to have it there for a couple of weeks to talk.
I, I think that was Mr. Brown's point, wasn't it?
Yeah, no, no, I, I wanted to let it sit in the public domain for a couple of weeks and just let people think for.
Yeah. Any discussion on this introduction items? Ms. Kirchner.
I, the only thing I would ask, since we're gonna have it out there for, for weeks or so, is um, maybe we can have an estimate of the cost of changing all the signs, so that when we come back to meet, that information's available. And we may.
Get that from facilities.
Is that something, Mr. Schroeder, you could, uh, tackle?
We can sure try, Tyler Schroeder, Deputy Executive, we'll, we'll have that information as best as we can by early January.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, uh, hearing none, please call a roll.
Joel, help me out and tell me who's second in this motion. Bird, thank you.
Give me your time.
It was Tyler.
Out of curiosity, do we know how many signs there are that you're, we're talking about?
Can you get that from facilities?
Mr. Brown?
I, I don't think it's a lot, I mean, it's directories and stuff like that, and I don't, I'd also like to say, in some ways, it, it's actually almost, uh, it, it makes the town look more cosmopolitan, I think it's a positive thing from an image perspective for the community, as, as much as anything. It's about connecting with the community and recognizing diversity, but I think it's also has a, a, a benefit in terms of just how, how we see ourselves and how others see us.
Any further discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
That passes unanimously. So, uh, Dana, help me out again, I got something here called special counsel only item, what does that mean?
That is Ben's letter that he, uh, was proposing to send to the governor.
So I know what the letter means, I'm just wondering what special counsel only means.
It's just an, it's just the way that we, an item that's going just to the council office, um, proposed by the council office goes underneath that section, if it hasn't gone to committee.
Okay, so, uh, it's AB twenty twenty dash five eighty-eight, approval of letter slash request to provide additional public spaces for assigned family visitations during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Mr. Ellenboss?
Yeah, so, um, a lot of, a lot of kids that are, you know, locked down in the dependency court, well, I guess not lockdown's not the right word, but that are in the dependency court process where they're, you know, with a foster family, and then they have, they have meetings where they, they've talked to their biological families, and anyway, uh, when, when the libraries and, and our chambers and those types of places got shut down, um, it became increasingly hard for these families to find a place to meet once, like, public parks were, you know, it's too cold now to be meeting outside. And so, um, you know, the, the, the folks that facilitate these meetings are having a heck of a time getting, you know, getting places to meet, and, and I'm sure there's, that locally, we could probably do something, you know, on our own, like, um, maybe possibly opening up our council chambers for some of these meetings to happen. Um, but it's, if it's a problem here, it's probably gonna be a problem in other counties too, and and I just wanted to make sure that the governor's office was aware of it.
Okay. Other discussion? Mr. Brown?
Yeah, Mr. Ellenboss, maybe a perfect place that we could consider doing this, if we can make it happen, is, uh, Parkland, the Bellingham Mall. Bellis Fair Mall, they got lots of space there, and it's warm, so, and cheap.
Other discussion, Mr. Donovan?
I wanna thank Ben for bringing this to my attention, cause I don't know about, and it's a respectful letter, um, so I'm glad he put this together.
I, I just wanna apologize that if there, it, I, I could wrote it on my cellphone, so um, it's, and I asked, I asked Dana if there was typos or anything that was, you know, my own, my typical run-on self that she, she helped me fix it up, so I hope that it, um, yeah. I wrote it on my cellphone from the seat of the tractor, that, that type of thing.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, please call a roll.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
Todd Donovan?
Yes.
Say again?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Ben Ellenboss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Red Brown?
Yes.
Barry Buchanan?
Yes.
Could you clarify who moved and seconded this?
I moved.
I'll say I seconded.
Kirchner moved, Donovan seconded. Were we done voting? I lost track here.
Yes, we.
Okay, passes seven zero. Okay, committee reports, is there anything else in finance? We only had two committees meet today, so is there anything else that you had, Mr. Bird?
No, no.
Okay.
Thank goodness twenty twenty's over, almost.
Um, uh, the one thing we had in, uh, that was interesting today, uh, was our, uh, report on COVID nineteen from the hospital, I thought we, we got a lot of good information from, uh, Dr. K, and, uh, and from Erica, so, um, it sounds like at this point, our ICU, ICU and ventilator capacity is, is good, um, and I suspect they'll keep us updated on that. Other items, I have one other item I wanna bring up before Mr. Sudu, and that is, I want to give a big shout out to our video man, David Brown. This is his last night with us. And, uh, I'll tell you, his dedication is amazing, as you all know. Um, I, he followed Tyler Bird and Sat Paul when Sat Paul's on the council with myself on the criminal justice, uh, jail tour. And we went to seven locations throughout the county, and David rode with me to most of those, I got to know him really well, and, and just a great guy. And, uh, I don't know where he's, he's, he was Reno, Idaho, or Bend, Oregon, is I think was his three choices, but anyway, we wish him well, I rea- I wish him well with his business and his family, and couldn't thank him enough for all the work he's done for the council, so we wish you well, David. Um, anybody else got anything, other items? Mr. Sudu?
Yes, I would like to indulge the council if you guys, uh, feel so inclined about the Point Roberts. So I just have written a quickly resolution, and I'll read it, and then we can have a brief discussion. Uh, I'm saying, the resolution says, ask the county executive to have conversations with uh, Point Roberts community members to seek ideas to develop more cooperative functioning of the PRCAC by A, work with taxpayers, chamber of commerce, and voters' organizations to learn their current status, membership, and community followings. B, work with any new organizations or groups to learn their status, membership, and community followings. C, and present a set of recommendations to the council by July one, twenty twenty-one. So in brief, I'm saying, if, 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 if council feels that I'm willing to take on to, to have that conversation with Point Roberts groups, I know because of COVID, it will be more, uh, Zoom meetings and other things, and maybe invitations for individuals to to call or meet or emails, but I will limit the communications only to the county executive's office and gather the information. I don't know, I, we will reach some, some good points or not, but at least it will be an attempt. And then I can let you know that, what I found, and, uh, and what the recommendations are.
Okay, um, I guess, what are you, what are you asking from the council, Doug?
I'm just asking if you guys think that this is worthwhile exercise.
Just a head nod kinda thing?
Head nod kinda thing, but it, it is then official to the public residents of the, uh, uh, Point Roberts that council wants me to do this. Because I'm not coming along by myself and going, say, hey, come talk to me. I wanted concurrence from the council that this is an idea council sports. Otherwise, we can continue to do what we have been doing.
So you would probably prefer than the council just have a motion that would, that would, that would approve that language?
Yes.
Okay, could you read the specifics again, so we can read that into the record as a motion?
I will, but Ms. Bird has some, some comments.
Yeah. I, I support that, and, I'll move approval of, of the term, or, of the statement. I move to approve the statement they, like you made, cause that's, yeah.
Let me, let me, let me read it again. Ask the county executive to have conversations with Point Roberts community members to seek ideas to develop more cooperative functioning of PRCAC by A, work with taxpayers, chamber, and voter organization to learn their current status, membership, and community followings. B, work with any other new groups or, I shouldn't say new groups, any other groups or organizations to learn their status, membership, and community followings. C is present a set of recommendations to the council by July one, twenty twenty-one.
So that's your motion, Tyler.
Yep.
I'll second it.
And Donovan seconds, and Mr. Brown?
Yeah, and, and your second thing, you said other organizations, I'd just like to include, other organizations or interested individuals.
That's fine, I accept that.
Councilmember Kirchner?
I, I just want to, uh, put my two cents out there that I think this would be a great idea. Um, because there are a lot of Canadian citizens with property in Point Roberts. Um, I think that the situation there gets a little dicey at times because of that. And because we are all representing United States citizens, I think that it will be important to listen to what the Canadian citizens have to say, but always um, fall on the side of where the United States citizens are taking, taking us, because we are their representatives. And that may sound a little, I don't know, exclusionary, but we are, we're elected and we're paid by, um, the US citizens that live on Point Roberts, we're not paid by the Canadian citizens, so I think it's important to make sure we.
Well, in a way, they are the taxpayers, because that is how they formed the taxpayers' organization, as I understand, because they were left out from the chamber and from the voters. Voters were representing US citizens because they have the right to vote.
Ah.
Yeah, and that's how they made it a taxpayers' association to bring in the Canadian element, because they do pay part of their, our, our, our revenue is, is from their property.
That makes a lot of sense now, I didn't know that, um, but I still, I still maintain that we are the representatives for United States citizens. I'm not saying I don't wanna hear from the taxpayer association or the Canadian citizens, but it really comes down to what the majority of the US citizens there want for their area, I believe.
Councilmember Ellenboss?
So is this, um, is this gonna be in lieu of what Councilmember Brown proposed, or is this running parallel with what Councilmember Brown opposed, or is this gonna trump what Councilmember Brown proposed? What, what's, what's the intent?
What it is, is that what the council approved today, that will take in, take place, we will appoint the members, we will work with the current, uh, uh, situation, the three members are appointed by three different organizations, the voters, the chamber, and the taxpayers, that they each send one of their, uh, from their board of directors or whosoever they recommend. There will be four people assigned, uh, appointed by the county executive. That council will work, it is, you know, that's, we, we cannot create a vacuum and not have anything, but at the same time, we, uh, my office and myself will make an attempt to gather the background information, what is causing, what is the cause of such controversies on, on, on their issues, and, and whether they are heard, they are not heard, what is, what is happening. Um, whatever I find, it is a public thing, and, uh, I will just bring it to the council. And then the council can wish to make any changes, because if those three organizations are get, getting trump cards, you know, they, 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 they just have, it can be five people, they can send one man member to the, that organization that, uh, the community advisory committee. So, so those three members are taken away, maybe there are any ideas or not, I don't know, I don't know that, but we can explore.
Mr. Donovan?
I wanna make sure that Mr. Ellenboss's question is answered clearly here, cause the way I understand the motion is it is parallel to what Mr. Brown's thing that we just approved, and it's open to any groups that might be formed, including my yet-to-be-formed Point Roberts, two folks with coffee organization, or anybody else who shows up, so it's, it's, it's pretty, pretty open, as I understand it.
Mr. Ellenboss?
Um, oh, I'm already unmuted, hey, um, so this, this sounds like it'll probably pass, and so I would just request, um, since I'm their representative, that I could be on that Zoom meeting when it happens, so I can uh, hear this, hear the input, if you don't mind, Executive.
No, I, I, I don't mind, but, uh, any member, council member is welcome to do the same, I'm, I'm not really taking exclusivity here. That everybody is welcome to, to reach out to any of the members or groups on their own, but I will keep you informed, uh, since you represent that district, that's a fair, fair.
Yeah, for inviting council members, it's shot, probably, it would be probably the district five and then the two at large.
The two at large, that's what I was gonna say, that, that there are two other people who also represent them, and, uh, and.
They, they probably, those, those two at large probably got more votes in that area than I did, so.
I think a majority of this council has been elected countywide at least once.
I, I think that, you know, no, no, I, I, this will be a transparent process, I'm not gonna go in, uh, incognito or something, start talking to people. Yeah, but I think that, that, I, I, it allows the community, I think I'm opening up an opportunity for the community to participate in this, how we can improve this, like, that's the whole question. This is not about, you know, A group or B group, how can we make it better, so that they gain, actually, they're in fighting is hurting them, they don't realize, you say, my little thing got hurt or not, I don't care about the rest of the community. I think we, we can, we can make an attempt, that's all.
Anything else on this motion? Mr. Brown?
I just want to support Ms. Kirchner's comment because Point Roberts is an interesting place where you do have, you know, two people who are going to live next door to each other or have properties next door to each other, one of whom is worried about the local schools being funded and conservation futures and stormwater and all the rest of it. The other one says, well, that's not my problem because I don't live here. I live across the other side of the border, so, and that's just, that's just true in any sort of seasonal community. So we have to remember that there will be, there will be people who say, who are not supportive of the broader community issue because it's not their full-time community.
Other discussion? Please call a roll.
Donovan?
Yes.
And Ellen Boss?
Yes.
Carol Frazee?
Yes.
Kathy Kirchner?
Yes.
Fred Brown?
Yes.
Gary Buchanan?
Yes.
Tyler Bird?
Yes.
That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
You're welcome, sir. Any other items? Mr. Donovan?
I'm just going to throw this out, I don't want us to, you know, vote on it, but I want to make sure it's on our agenda. We're, it's not just today, but like our council meetings are running very differently than they would when we're in person, when we would have breaks and not just committee meetings, but our, this night hasn't been that much of a big deal. But like, you know, we would never go from six to midnight and not schedule a break. We would never have committee meetings that would start at nine or 10 and just go to four or five without any breaks. So I think we need to address this and I sent an email around. But we're posting times about having hard stops for our meetings and ignoring them. And in doing that, we're kind of ignoring some basic facts, like, yeah, we got to like stop and eat and pee sometimes. We're kind of ignoring what we're telling the public, we're ignoring that our staff has needs to actually reset stuff between meetings, actually have their time for breaks. So I would move, and I'm going to throw this out there and hopefully we can discuss it in January, that if we're going to continue to meet online, that we adhere to schedules that have stop times that are agreed to by the chair of the council and the clerk of the council. And with maybe, you know, some discussion about, maybe like there's a five-minute slot in terms of how that works. But we would never do the things we're doing right now if we were in person. We'd be like looking each other, looking people in the eye, we'd have staff out there looking at us. And we're not being really good about this and there's not any particular committee or chair of the council. But I think we need to recognize this, that we're kind of pushing the boundaries of how our labor practices are as an employer of council staff. So I'm throwing that out there, I think we should address this in January.
Mr. Bird?
I'd like to have the conversation too, for different reasons, but I appreciate Councilmember Donovan's rationale, I guess for some of the same reasons too, but it's definitely hard, I think, for any of us, including staff, to sit that long. It does seem like this year we have a lot more things that have been on the agenda than we've had in the past and we're cramming those in. It's really difficult chairing a committee when you have so many things that were in address and you don't know what one person might ask or what might not be asked or how long it's going to take or what the information is going to be. The, even looking at today, I mean, Councilmember Brown caught a few things that I didn't catch, but once he brought them up, I, it made sense, I was like, ah, it actually accused something where I want more information too. So I don't know how we solve for that problem, but it really isn't fun setting from 9:00 AM to 1:00 AM or whatever, you know, with a couple of minutes here or there or dashing to get dinner or lunch, literally running back and forth. So, you know, ideally, well, I'd like to have a conversation too, but I kind of like to use our committees better in the context of running them in tandem, to be honest. They, you know, we've talked about how could like staff in the past where with certain departments for years, maybe they haven't seen adding additional personnel and staffing, even though the amount of time that they've spent has grown. And when you look at what we're doing, I think that that's the exact same thing, right? So we haven't added more time, we need one day every other week. We haven't expanded that other than trying to maximize, you know, moving it a little earlier and going later at night. Although we're dealing with a whole lot more stuff, so can we at least maybe running in tandem so that we can have more time to again, address these things and ask those questions and then rely on the committee reports and information a little bit more? But I don't know what the solution is, but Todd, I would like to have that conversation too.
Mr. Ellen Boss?
Yeah, Tyler brought up running them in tandem and I guess, maybe I'm not. I think tandem means at the same time. So I guess my concern with that is that I'm not on the finance committee, but it pretty much encompasses almost everything we do as a council, almost. And I, I don't feel like I would be prepared enough without being able to be involved in that conversation. So I would hate to have the finance committee run at the same time as planning and development and not be able to hear about what happened in finance. So I guess the, and Councilmember Donovan brings up an excellent point with what kind of an employer we've been to our staff. Because I always just feel like, well, hey, I asked for this by running for this position. So it's my punishment for winning an election to sit here from 8:30 in the morning till 1:00 AM like we did last two weeks ago. But, but I don't often think about the folks that are helping us in the background. So that's an excellent point, but maybe we, I mean, when you see the finance committee with however 26, 27 things and if this is all essential business, maybe we need to meet every Tuesday instead of meeting for 20 hours every other Tuesday.
Yeah, the other thing about running in tandem, I'm looking at my screen, I have one, two, three council staff and a legal. We can't replicate that in tandem, I don't think, I just don't think we have the capacity. And I agree with Ben, you know, I want to hear what's going on in finance if I'm on another committee that happened to be meeting in parallel. So I agree with that. Councilmember Frazee?
Yes, I want to go back to, I think we mentioned this in our retreat in January, if you remember back to January, where you're trying to get as many questions as we can answered before the meeting by email and emailing staff and department heads and getting those answers beforehand, I think are really, I think that could save us a lot of time too.
Anything else, Councilmember Donovan?
Yes, maybe when we do our organization, our annual discussion, if we can talk about this stuff. But yeah, I mean, you know, there's the idea of having committee hearings on different days than the council hearing, which would mean we'd be meeting four weeks, four days a week. There's what Ms. Frazee was talking about, like us being more proactive about asking our questions of staff, you know, rather than just, you know, doing that in the present. So it's a conversation that we need to have that we've been avoiding. And it just, I think we're in person, it's easier and we're not, and maybe it's a temporary thing to kind of feel like, how do we deal? We haven't talked about how are we going to deal with this? It's hard to chair a meeting virtually because everybody's super polite and they like to just be quiet. And my caduce to all the people chairing these things, I hope we can have the conversation about like, you know, the kind of subtle looking at the chair and putting a finger up just like this and being recognized. That happens much quicker in person and it takes a lot longer. So our time management stuff is just different now, so I'm just, I'm just throwing that stuff out there.
Mr. Ellen Boss?
I, you know, I think that, you know, Carol has a pretty good point about, you know, getting your questions out there beforehand, but there is a certain efficiency in having the conversation with all seven of us listening. So I, you know, there's a little balance there and maybe we're on the wrong side of that balance. But I like, I like the conversations and I like, oftentimes there's, there's really good conversations that happen within our playful banter sometimes.
Mr. Bird?
Yeah, getting our questions answered beforehand, I could see that being a possibility if we were getting items a month beforehand and we had ample time. But if a agenda packet comes out on Wednesday, I get a chance to download it Thursday morning. I'm not a speed reader at all, I can't read that packet in a day, right? So if best, I get through the whole thing by Friday afternoon and then I can shoot an email off hoping that someone's still around, they're not there for the weekend, they come back on Monday. Yeah, then I might have a chance, or I might get a reply or I have a chance to get a follow-up question in or something before I have to vote on it, and then there's no opportunity Tuesday other than in person, right? So there's not enough time based on the current structure to actually ask questions across the board on all this stuff. And again, I think I'm a big believer in understanding and stuff and asking those, but also there's values, right? We just kind of value different things. And for me, I value the public conversation and discussion around it because it's good for us and it's good for me to understand what everyone else is thinking and why and what questions that you're looking for and what things I might have missed or not queued on. That's helpful and if it's helpful to me, then I guarantee it's helpful for the community too. And if we do everything via email and we just show up and yes vote, no vote, and there's no conversation, I think that the community suffers from that. So I'd like to find a way to figure that out and I understand the tandem thing isn't the ideal situation either. I agree, I'll go back to, I don't know that we're going to solve it tonight, I'm happy to discuss it, but I do appreciate Todd bringing it up and I would like to talk about it because I don't like getting cut short and sending everything to the night and then trying to rush through it in the evening when we're already exhausted either and hoping I remember what I wanted to talk about. So it'd be good to figure out.
Mr. Brown?
Well, we're fortunate enough to be blessed with an absolute expert on council procedure in Dana Brown Davis. And I would like to suggest that we ask her to spend a little bit of time between now and January doing some investigation on best practices of other jurisdictions and what they've done in the new Zoom environment for council meetings and electronic stuff. I mean, there's probably, you know, a couple of ideas might be throwing up one of the screens as a timer when you're getting close to the end of the particular meeting or, you know, some shorthand for handling when people are having difficulty with microphones. I don't know, but I'd like to invite Dana to do some research for us and tell us what we can do better.
Mr. Ellen Boss?
I could share some of my tips with you, Rod. Like if there's cows that need to be bred, I bring the cell phone to the barn. If I have to go to the bathroom, I shut the screen off and mute it and you go to the bathroom with me. I'm sure you didn't want to know that, but that's what happens.
I'm not going to the bathroom with you.
I just wanted to say that our rules do allow for us to be more structured and chairs can implement stricter rules on how they run the meeting. One of them is that everybody has a chance to speak on the motion and keeping us focused on speaking on the motion, not getting too far off track. So we all could probably do better on paying attention to the rules that we are supposed to be operating under.
Mr. Donovan?
Yeah, Ben, you brought up an awkward point there. So when we meet in public and we need to break to like do something with your cows or use the bathroom, like we all, the public knows and we kind of all are off screen or we're not at the dice. And now it's like, they don't know. And so, but anyway, so these are, these are things we need to talk about in January, I think. And it'd be good for the public and for us to kind of figure out, because we don't have, we need new norms. We don't have norms about how we're doing all this stuff. So I'm just, I'm hoping we can have this conversation, not at 10 at night after a meeting that started at 9:45, so.
But thank you. Let's leave it there. I think that's a good discussion. Hope everybody has a great holiday. Mr. Brown?
Sorry, Mr. Joe, I want to bring up one other issue. Something we have to think about seriously is something we've already started a discussion about and we talked a bit about again today, is what are we going to do to protect our health department staff, staff at the mission, staff at the hospitals from burnout? Because we're looking at another year of this, they're not going to survive unless we find some way to help them. And we can't hire replacements from anywhere else to come in and take over from some week. We have to have that discussion, we have to be creative as to what we're going to do to protect those people. Or we'll lose them, we'll lose, we'll lose the most important part of dealing with the response.
Okay, anybody got anything else? All right, we'll see you on Thursday for our Cherry Point Work Session, we are adjourned.